Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Bullock.
Here.
Councilwoman McEldowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show that we're all here this evening. I'd like to ask everybody to rise and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And please keep in your prayers the Martinez family on this sad day. Mr. Benson, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, and certainly the Martinez family is somebody we want to keep in our prayers. I just wanted to point out that today, June the 4th, is the 70th anniversary of the Battle of Midway in the Pacific. A lot of people lost their lives in that battle. It completely changed the course of the Pacific War by destroying four Japanese carriers. We had the Enterprise, the Hornet, and the Yorktown, and we completely wiped out the Japanese Navy that day. If we hadn't won that battle, people in California would be speaking Japanese today. So let's remember the people who lost their lives at the Battle of Midway. Seventy years ago.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like the staff to go around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Ronald Lapena, South Adams County Fire.
Denny Streed, South Adams Fire.
Nick Graff, South Adams Fire.
Steven Parker, South Adams Fire.
Sean Ferrex, South Adams Fire.
Bobby Knoll, South Adams Fire.
Cole Mondragon, South Adams Fire.
Victor Loyah, South Adams Fire.
Rick Bosted, South Adams Fire.
Derek Ross, South Adams Fire.
Joe Golden, VFW Post 4444.
Gene Meyer, VFW Post 4444.
Al Cordova, American Legion Post 151.
Craig Matuga, South Adams Fire.
Kylie Canon.
Addison Canon.
Justin Canon.
Nicole Mallico.
Sean Frank.
Lisa Frank.
Jeanette Lewis.
Oliver Lewis, retired, South Adams Fire, retired council.
Pam Sratler.
Thelma Cole.
Guillermo Serna.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Steve Timms, Planning Division.
Leanne Noel, Grand Administrator.
Paul Workman, Planning Staff.
Jared Draper, Planning Staff.
Patrick Buckley, Building Safety Division.
Michelle Hill, Acting Economic Development Manager.
Michelle Halsted, Communications.
Barb Taggert, the Retired enlisted Association Auxiliary, Chapter 39.
Roger Taggert, Retired enlisted Association, Chapter 39.
Melanie Bro, Relay for Life, Prairie View, South Adams County Chairman.
Seal Martin, American Cancer Society.
Daniel O'Leary, Quality Community Foundation President.
Brett Steinbar, North Forest Office Base.
Chuck Baker, Commerce City Police.
Greg Clemens, Public Works.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to invite Mr. Daniel O'Leary and Leanne Noel from the Foundation to come forward, as well as the scholarship recipient Nicole Mallico.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Daniel O'Leary. I'm with the Quality Community Foundation Board, and I think we are the only two in attendance today. But our other board members are Kyle Sickman, Carol Taylor Boyd, Shannon Morales, and Roger Tinkelmanberg. Tonight, the Quality Community Foundation is presenting this year's scholarship, annual scholarship, to Ms. Nicole Mallico. Ms. Mallico is a Commerce City resident who just recently graduated from the Community Christian School of North Glenn. Ms. Mallico graduated sixth in her class with a GPA of 3.5 and has been accepted to Metropolitan State College of Denver. She will be majoring in adult fitness and a minor in business. At this time, I would like to have City Council join me at the podium to present Ms. Mallico with her scholarship and to take a couple of photos.
Okay, so we'll look at Mom.
Sorry.
Look at Mom. Okay, now look at me. One more at me. Okay.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you and congratulations to Nicole. Next, I would like to invite Leanne back up to the podium to tell us all about the Memorial Day Parade winners.
Yeah, good evening. Tonight, we have our Best of trophies that we will be awarding. And so now that you've all been seated, we're going to call you back down after we've given away the trophies. So first of all, we have the Most Creative, and that goes to the Retired enlisted Association Number 39. Their float depicted a veteran cemetery scene with flags of remembrance placed by the crosses that honor our veterans' service to our country. So, retired enlisted?
Do this photo, and then we'll do one big one with everybody. Stay there. Stay there.
And next, we have the Best Expression of Theme, and that was the American Legion Post and Auxiliary Unit 151. And their float was a veterans' memorial garden that was dedicated to the Solis family. The family included five sons, of whom all served in the military. So congratulations, American Legion Post. There you go. And the next one is the Best of Parade, and that's the Curie Tolles, Gary A. Carson's VFW Post 4444. Their float displayed a portion of the Bill of Rights, and that was the freedom of speech, the freedom of press, the right to bear arms, and the right to peaceably assemble. They also displayed a flag-draped casket that was to honor the veterans' ultimate sacrifice.
We have council come down, and we'll take a photo with all of them and these three gentlemen. You might want to drop them a little bit so you can see your smiling faces. There you go. There we go. Oh, you're good. You're fine. Don't worry about you. You're just, you're perfect.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to all the winners. There were some spectacular floats in the parade, and apparently, you all had the best. So congratulations again from the city. Next, I'd like to invite Michelle Hill forward to give us a breakdown of the Business and Development Summit presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This year, we again hosted the Business and Development Summit that was held on Friday, April 13th, here in the City Council chambers. And tonight, I just wanted to come before you to give you a summary presentation of some of the themes and topics that came up from businesses throughout the summit. I also wanted to highlight why this has been a very valuable tool to the Economic Development Division and the entire city in the past, and then give you a highlight of the results from the summit and the survey questions, and where we're going to go from here. So first of all, what is the Business and Development Summit? It's a forum where we invite in the businesses, property owners, and developers in the city to discuss the topics that are most impacting their business, but more importantly, to give us feedback on what the city can do to help them grow their business here in Commerce City, because that's our primary goal. The image you see before you is the invitation that went out. It was a two-sided postcard that was sent out to over 1,500 recipients, all of the businesses that are registered here in Commerce City, as well as property owners, developers, and other stakeholders, such as real estate brokers, community organizations that we work with very closely. As I mentioned before, in the past years, this has been a very valuable tool to the city. In 2010 and 2011, 2010 was the first summit. Out of that summit came the Business Advancement Task Force, which made short-term recommendations to implement the incentive program. That has been very successful, and we'll be back here in July to give you a summary of how that is progressing and make some possible recommendations for improving it. In addition, they highlighted that our development process needed some tweaking to be a little more business-friendly. Also, customer service could use some improvements. So the advancement, a customer service advancement task force was created. And then finally, the target industry focus groups, and we started working on tax policies that were identified by the businesses. More recently, we've taken that a step further. The Business Advisory Committee and the Citizen Advisory Committee were both formed out of recommendations from the business and industry focus groups. The Business Advisory Committee has now created the Business Retention Task Force and the Workforce Subcommittee, and they're moving forward on specific projects that we'll talk about in a little more detail. The Business Resource Fair was another component that businesses identified that they needed more access to knowing what services were out there in the community that they could use to help their business grow, whether it was access to capital for new startup businesses, developing a marketing plan, or a business plan. And so last year, with the Business and Investor Appreciation Event, we implemented the first Business Resource Fair that will be continued again this year. The format of the event is twofold. We really want to solicit as much feedback from businesses and property owners as possible. So we do two components. The first is an online survey, and the second is industry-specific discussion groups. I'll now talk about the survey results. Some of the questions are very generic. We want to identify the types of businesses that are responding, where they're located in the city, how they feel about the business trends and how their business is doing, if they've improved over the last 12 months, if they see themselves improving further down the road. This year, we incorporated workforce concerns as a direct result of the Workforce Subcommittee that wanted to identify what some of the issues are and therefore, how they could tackle those and move forward. And then finally, we asked questions to get a sense of whether or not the city is considered to be business-friendly. We think we are. We work hard to be. But what do the businesses think? We had 25 responders to the survey. We would have liked more. But the nice thing is that that sample did represent all of the target industries for the city, as well as the developers and building community. Of the responders, one-third of the businesses that responded said that they do plan to hire between two and four more staff within the next year. There are an additional 42% said that they weren't sure yet. Businesses are growing, but they weren't sure yet. Six businesses are planning capital improvements. A number of those were investments into either office equipment or operating equipment, also improvements to their building, and one even responded that they're making plans to purchase their facility. And then again, we asked if, in the last 12 months, has the demand for your product or service increased, stayed stable, or declined? We're very excited to report that 90% said that that is on the rise, that's increasing. So that's a good sign that the economy is starting to come back for most of our businesses. And then we looked forward. What do you expect in the next year? And again, 83% said that they expect their situation to be at least the same or better, a couple significantly better. This survey, this slide, I'm sorry, included because every year, we have asked businesses to identify this list and take a look at the list and identify these topics, what they feel is the highest priority for the city to make changes, support, implement, to help businesses continue to grow in the city. So taking the list on the left, we asked them to identify and rank them from 1 to 14, with 1 being the absolute most important, that would provide the most benefit to businesses in the city, and 14 being either no benefit or they didn't care. Within each category, then, the responses were averaged, and that's the response that you see. Now, the interesting thing is, we kind of expected that one or two of the categories would come up with a 1 or 2 on average, so that most businesses would identify that was the most important thing to help businesses move forward. That isn't the result we got. A couple businesses might have ranked it very high, others ranked it very low. So it averaged out to be right in the middle. But two of the things on here that were identified as fairly high priorities, being fives, is tack rebates and road improvements. And coincidentally, those were then reflected again when we asked what are the capital improvement categories that the city should focus on for business growth? And that is the list there, the roads and business incentives, again, being priorities. And we already talked about the fact that we wanted to know from businesses, do they consider us to be business-friendly? I apologize, I skipped one. Nope, nope. We're getting to that. The workforce is, we asked questions about the workforce specifically. One of the interesting things that came out of this is the fact that when we asked businesses, what are the skills that they most need from new applicants applying for their business, and what do they have trouble finding? The interesting response was that they're soft skills, the ability to problem-solve, the ability to take initiative and self-start, or even just expectations, workplace expectations, and how they meet those. And those are the soft things of, you know, you need to show up for work when you're scheduled, or call in. You need to come appropriately dressed and ready to work. The other thing interesting that we found is that businesses are no longer using newspapers to advertise their vacant positions. It's primarily word of mouth. It's not even on the websites. So those are interesting things that our Workforce Subcommittee wanted to key in on, and they're going to use that going forward. Now we get to the business-friendly. In general, we asked businesses, is Commerce City business-friendly? 82% said that Commerce City is either very business-friendly or at least mostly business-friendly, which is a good response. We're working hard on that, so it's good to see that going up. And that told us that what we're doing is working, but we probably still have room for improvements. A couple of things you'll notice there on the list is that they're saying that city staff is very responsive to business people and the needs that they have. We're working hard to make things easier, and we're making effort to accommodate businesses and still maintain a positive business environment. So those are all good things to hear. Of course, we asked them, what can we do to be even more business-friendly? A couple of things I wanted to point out to you is that another area of focus we've been working on is to try to eliminate and reduce the unnecessary requirements to businesses and their costs. Sometimes, the processes that the city has had in the past or requirements, whether from the planning process, the development process, the building process, those things can add a lot of cost to businesses. And that's one thing that businesses pointed out, try to eliminate that for us. Keep our costs down. The economy's tough. We still need help. And then again, they asked us to continue moving forward in open-minded direction in addressing these difficult matters to help businesses grow in the city. These are the results that came out of the survey. The interesting thing is, those were pretty much echoed when we went into the actual event and held the summit. This year, we did the summit a little bit differently. We broke up into four industry-specific discussion groups. In the past, some of you might be aware that we actually passed a microphone in this room and asked everybody to tell us what they thought. Great approach, not sustainable as the group kept growing, because we ran out of time for some people to give us their input. So we broke it into smaller groups, moved everybody, the groups, around the different areas of the building. And the interesting thing was that we found out that they all came up with the same conclusions to the questions that we asked. So it's good to know that all the businesses are on the same avenue. One thing I might point out is that we did pay special attention to requests from Spanish-speaking businesses in the community this year. We had a separate Spanish-speaking business owners group, and we also had the survey provided in Spanish. And that is something we'll continue in the future. I do want to thank the members of the Business Advisory Committee who facilitated these discussion groups for us, and they're listed here. Our Business Advisory Committee has really jumped forward. They're moving us forward and helping us to do some of the things that we haven't been able to do as a small department on our own. So we're very grateful for that. Those who facilitated were asked to focus on three questions primarily, and those are listed here. What is currently impacting the growth of your business? How can the city help your business grow? And then, of course, what is the availability of workforce and how it is impacting your business? The results that came up were a common theme. Businesses particularly asked that we help them connect with other businesses in the city, that we offer more networking opportunities for them, and that we pay attention to the fact that small businesses, a number of businesses in the city are very small, with three or fewer employees, and they have different needs than the larger businesses, even the larger businesses being five to 10 employees. So that's something that we're going to be working on moving forward. They also asked about signage and identified that sometimes for smaller businesses, they have different signage needs than larger businesses. And the great thing is, that's already in the works. Our Planning Division is already taking a look at that and working on it. Some of the other things that came up, a lot of the same themes, buy local to support local economy, again, connecting businesses through business-to-business connections, increasing the city's services, and developing a well-educated and trained workforce. The important thing that was identified there is to carry that back into the school system. Start it there, so it's built up, and it's a ready workforce when students come out of school. So the next steps. A number of these things, as I mentioned, are already in the works. The business networking opportunities will be taken on by the Business Retention Task Force, which hopes to introduce new opportunities as early as this fall. The Business Directory will be part of a rewrite of the Economic Development website pages that will be incorporated and hopefully rolled out the first quarter of next year. Business resources, we're expanding our Business Resource Fair in conjunction with the Annual Business and Investor Appreciation Event. So the number, the types of resources available are the Workforce Committee, obtaining or procuring government contracting, business plan development, a number of other things like that that businesses have asked for. And then finally, we're going to continue our strong relationship with the Workforce and Business Center, who actively participates in the Workforce Subcommittee for the city. That concludes our summary presentation tonight of the summit. We are excited to continue moving forward on those activities and implement some of the things that businesses have requested, as we have in the past. But at this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions you might have.
Does the council have any questions for Michelle Hill on the Business Summit? Mr. McEldowney?
Ms. Hill, I just want to thank you for the update. It's great to see the continued dialogue being facilitated by the Economic Development Division. I think, you know, we saw this get off the ground in 2010. We had high hopes, and it's certainly been a great thing to watch, the outcome of these discussions. And obviously, you touched on the incentives and some of the other things that have come of that. And I'm just really excited to see you in this position, your new position now, helping to play a more active role in facilitating that dialogue. I know it's one of your strengths. We've certainly seen it firsthand in regard to the retail industry, and so I'm excited about the potential that this dialogue brings. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle, I also want to thank you for all the effort that you and the rest of the Economic Development staff put into the summit and the good information that you got out of it to know how to better serve our businesses in Commerce City.
Thank you, Mayor. It was definitely a team effort, and we'll be working with the Planning Division, Building Division, moving forward. So thank you.
Right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication. I'll remind everybody that there's a three-minute rule. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. First is Jeanette Lewis.
My name's Jeanette Lewis. I live at 5680 East 67th Avenue in Commerce City. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. I'm here this evening representing myself and my husband, Orville Lewis. We're here this evening with hearts filled with joy, clouded by a bit of sadness. Some of the council staff, our friends and family members remember the events that occurred the month of April and the council meeting on April 11th, 2011. The only thing our Uncle Don Kugel knew and remembered with so much pride was that you honored him in his service to the country Memorial Day 2011. The rest, well, as my Uncle Don always said when he was asked about World War II, and something as a young child I always remembered, some things are best left unsaid, and so it is tonight. This evening, we're here to thank you and tell you you will never know the pure joy that radiated his life from what he called "the greatest honor he ever received", one he humbly believed he did not deserve. Don Kugel began his military service June 1942, just weeks after graduating from Denver South High School. He took his basic training at Bend, Oregon, and was deployed by transport ship to Schole Field in Honolulu, Hawaii, and then on to the Marshall Islands in the Pacific Theater, first to the island of Saipan, and later to Okinawa. He was a member of the United States Army Third, 361st Training Support Battalion, Fifth Armored Brigade, Division West One. He was awarded two Purple Hearts for injuries he received during his services to our country. On Sunday, May 27th, 2011, one day short of the year when he had led the biggest parade the state of Colorado has to offer, as he laid in his hospice bed with his faithful dog Radar beside his side, he closed his eyes and left, so he could be on time for a homecoming reunion with his old army buddies, family members, and the biggest parade of all. all. So it is for with ever-grateful hearts that we take this time to give personal thanks to council members JD Carson, Dominique Moreno, Renee Bullock, Jason Macaldoney, former council members Kathy Teeter, Tracy Snyder, Pablo Diaz, and Mayor Paul Nutell, and especially, especially to LeAnn Noel and her committee for not only honoring Uncle Donald Kuhl, but also my husband, Orville, son Ron, and grandsons Andrew Lewis. Four generations, one family dedicated to giving back to this country. Mayor and council members, we appreciate you giving us this time, and I would ask that you respect us by not asking any questions. God bless you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else on the list for Citizen Communication, we'll move into approval of the minutes. April 16, and the 23, 2012. Mr. Macaldoney?
Move to approve the minutes of April 16, 2012.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Your motion is second to approve the minutes for April 16 and April 23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next set of minutes is May 7. I need to ask for an abstention for Mr. Teeter, because he was absent that day. Mr. Bullock?
Move to excuse Councilman Teeter from the minutes.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Motion to allow Mr. Teeter to abstain. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'll ask for a motion for the minutes. Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of April 23, 2012.
May 7.
Of May 7, 2012.
Thank you. Mr. Macaldoney?
Second.
Your motion is second to approve the minutes for May 7, 2012. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There are two items on the Consent Agenda this evening. If anyone on council wishes to further discuss or vote separately on any Consent Agenda item, they can ask to remove the item off of the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Mr. Macaldoney?
Mr. Mayor, I would move the, actually, I'm sorry, my motion is, or that's from a prior item. Disregard this.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Mr. Mayor, my light's on to move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has an issue with either of the items that are on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion, Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda. Council seated.
Okay. Mr. Macaldoney?
Second.
Your motion is second to approve the Consent Agenda. Well, the city attorney, please read the titles.
Title of ordinance SAP-003-12/URP-001-12, an ordinance approving a modification of the city's center Phase 1 Urban Renewal Plan. Title of ordinance 1895 reads, "An ordinance amending Section 6-2012 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Weeds and Vegetation." That concludes the Consent Agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Let the record show that the Consent Agenda has been passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we have some public hearings this evening. There are 10 public hearings on tonight's agenda. These items are interrelated, and would ask council to consider consolidating the public hearings for each into one public hearing. If council is agreeable to this request, I'm open for a motion to that effect. Mr. Macaldoney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually move that we consolidate the public hearings for ordinances 1898 through 1907 into a single public hearing. And I would note in that motion that the vote, I would expect to occur on an ordinance-by-ordinance basis. So while we'll have the hearing combined, we'll cast votes on an item-by-item basis once that's complete.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Second that.
Your motion is second to combine all the public hearings and vote on each one independently. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'm going to open the first public hearing at this time and ask staff to make their presentation. Mr. Gayler, do you have something to add?
Prior to staff proceeding, I'd like to make a couple of items a matter of record for this proceeding. First of all, I'd ask that be marked, and I have marked Exhibit A, be made a part of the record in this case, which is the council communication submitted by Mr. Patrick Buckley regarding the issues that are before council in this proceeding. Exhibit B is a copy of the slides that were presented in a study session to the city council that should be made a part of the record in this proceeding as a public hearing. And Exhibit C is a letter which was received from South Adams County Fire Protection District dated May 23, 2012 regarding the adoption of the International Fire Code and the International Building Code, addressed to the mayor and members of the city council, signed by Kenneth Koger, President of the Board of Directors of South Adams County Fire Protection District. That letter is made a part of the record in this proceeding and is marked as Exhibit C. So having asked that those three documents be admitted as exhibits and made part of the record, I would ask the mayor to concur that they are made a part of this record.
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then, at this time, then, I believe Mr. Buckley is prepared to proceed with the staff presentation. The process that will follow here is that staff will present, then anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the ordinances will present, and then anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the ordinances then would be given the opportunity to present.
Okay.
So having said that, Mr. Buckley then can proceed. Go right ahead, Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Appreciate your time this evening. We've presented a lot of information to you folks in the last meeting in May, and going back to November of 2011, on the adoption of the 2009 codes. At the May meeting, I don't think I did a very good job of separating the two remaining issues that we are dealing with. And so I'm providing a brief slide presentation tonight, just five slides, attempting to more clearly designate the issues. If you have any questions, please let me know, and then after the slides, I'll have a few comments. We have basically boiled this down to two remaining issues, both involving fire sprinkler systems. And to clarify, both these issues do deal with fire sprinkler systems but involve different building codes. And I don't know that I was able to make that very clear last time. So the first issue is the city's longstanding amendment that's been to the building and fire codes, requiring the fire sprinkler systems in all non-residential buildings and building additions 5,000 square feet and larger. And the issue at hand, of course, is whether to continue this amendment with the adoption of the 2009 additions, or to pass over it and leave it out of the code. International Building Code and International Fire Code apply to the construction of all non-residential buildings, including commercial and industrial buildings. The second issue is residential fire sprinkler systems, now required in one- and two-family dwellings under the 2009 International Residential Code. It's a brand-new requirement in the 2009 Residential Code. The 2009 International Residential Code is a different code from the IBC and IFC. It regulates one- and two-family dwellings and townhouses, and all other buildings are regulated by the IBC and the IFC. So I wanted to point out that distinction for council this evening. And that's really the long and the short of it, and the explanation. I have a few comments to make regarding the city's current amendment to the IBC and IFC requiring sprinkler systems in non-residential buildings. It's important to note, of 27 counties and cities surveyed in the metro area, Commerce City is the only one requiring fire sprinklers in buildings based on smaller floor areas than required by the IBC and IFC. And it's also important to note that that requirement only pertains to the South Adams County Fire District. Commerce City is served by three fire districts, including the Sable Altera Fire District and the Greater Brighton Fire District. And this amendment does not appear in those codes, so it's only in the South Adams County Fire District coverage area. The Community Development Department understands the importance and vitality of economic development in the city, and has brought this issue forward for discussion with council, as none of the 27 surrounding jurisdictions surveyed, including our closest competitors, Aurora, Brighton, Adams County, and Thornton, have amended their IBC or IFC fire sprinkler provisions. If you build currently across the street outside of Commerce City and unincorporated Adams County, this amendment does not apply. Fire sprinkler systems cost $3 to $4 per square foot, and that's a very, very conservative estimate. To install a new construction, depending on conditions, in a 10,000-square-foot office building, the installation cost could be between $30,000 and $40,000. Small business owners have voiced concerns over these costs for buildings that would not normally be required to have a fire sprinkler system. Community Development is bringing these issues and costs to council, as amending the building and fire codes to require fire sprinkler systems in buildings where the codes would not normally require fire sprinkler protection could be an economic disincentive to build in the city if these costs could be saved by building in unincorporated Adams County, Aurora, Thornton, or Brighton, or any of the other 27 jurisdictions. I want to stress that a vote to adopt the 2009 IBC and IFC without local amendment to fire sprinkler provisions is not a vote against the South Adams County Fire District and/or other emergency responders. Instead, it is a decision whether the building and fire codes as minimum life safety standards for the city are sufficient in addressing the safety of lives and property as written, or if there are unique circumstances in the city that warrant making the codes more restrictive. Now regarding the provisions in the residential code for residential fire sprinkler systems, based on discussions with council in November of 2011, staff proceeded to remove by a local amendment the sections from the IRC that require mandatory fire sprinkler systems. Again, 27 counties and cities were surveyed in the metro area. Of those, 10 have adopted the 2009 IRC requiring fire sprinklers in new one- and two-family dwellings and townhomes, and nine have adopted, excuse me, have adopted, yes, removing those requirements. The remaining eight have either not yet adopted the 2009 additions or have set aside fire sprinkler requirements requiring separate action by their elected officials to reinstate provisions. Of our closest competitors, only Thornton has adopted the IRC requiring fire sprinklers. Aurora removes the fire sprinkler requirements, and Brighton and Adams County have not yet adopted the 2009 IRC. The Denver Metro HBA provided information to council in November 2011 supporting the city's decision to proceed with adoption without fire sprinkler amendments. And it's important to note, while code provisions making fire sprinkler systems mandatory in one- and two-family dwellings and townhomes have been removed from the IRC, the code still provides a means to voluntarily install fire sprinkler systems should home builders and/or consumers wish to install such a system. It has not been prohibited, it's just mandatory provisions have been removed. So we've retained provisions in the code that if you want to install a system, and you're able to negotiate that with your builder, you could still install a fire sprinkler system in your one- and two-family dwelling. Back to the non-residential fire sprinkler amendment. We've had several situations since I've been with the city where developers and owners have come into the city to float their plans, discuss their proposed expansions, new construction or additions. And when they find out about the sprinkler system requirement, they have either modified their plans, or in some cases, have scrapped them and walked away. We've had some businesses purposely build smaller additions than they normally wanted to build because of the effect of the amendment. The Volvo Company down here on Quebec has built three 4,900-square-foot additions, excuse me, two 4,900-square-foot additions that I'm aware of, to avoid that sprinkler system provision. In the last couple of years, the Blue Beacon Truck Wash Facility, the Green Park Parking Facility, and the 104th Avenue Medical and Professional Offices are projects that are required to put in fire sprinkler systems in their buildings because of the local amendment, where they otherwise would not have been required. In many occupancies, the 5,000-square-foot area threshold is as much as 140% smaller area compared to when fire sprinklers are required by the IBC and IFC. Most occupancies don't require fire sprinkler systems until you get to 12,000 square feet. Requiring fire sprinklers at a 5,000-square-foot threshold is completely arbitrary and not based on any technical, statistical, or analytical background, research, or study. And the last comment I want to make is that the building codes and the allowable areas, building heights, and occupancy, and use classifications are some of the oldest provisions in the building codes and fire codes dating back to the 1920s, and are based on years of research compiled by all types of fire and building professionals, including the fire service, and are based on the relative hazards associated with buildings. And quite frankly, the code establishes a minimum threshold far greater than 5,000 square feet before it becomes an issue to the occupants, inhabitants of the building, and for emergency responders. So those are the statements that I wanted to make. We wanted to make sure council is aware of the economic conditions and concerns about continuing with this amendment. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Any of the council members have any questions for the staff at this time? Councilwoman Carson?
Please excuse me if I ramble. I don't really have my questions down exactly. Does Thornton have this on non-residential?
They do not. Thornton has not amended their building and fire codes for non-residential buildings. They have kept sprinkler systems in the residential code for one- and two-family dwellings, but not for the non-residential.
So non-residential, they have no code for...
They have a code, but they do not have any amendments requiring sprinklers at a smaller floor area than required in the code. They follow the code straight up as to when sprinklers are required.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but Commerce City has businesses that are totally unique to us. Manufacturing, products, we have industry here that you don't see in these surrounding
My opinion is that that could be true with places like Thornton, but Aurora certainly, and Denver certainly has much warehouse and manufacturing and industrial space as Commerce City, if not more.
I know I voiced my opinions last time, and I very much appreciate this presentation. I can't tell you that they've changed. It is, if the police chief of this great city came and told me there was things we needed to do to provide safety for citizens in our city, I would follow that. We heard from the fire marshal who opposes this. It's his job. He's the It's his job, he's the expert in that field, for us to support what the expert in this city asks us to do as city officials. The International Fire Code is one that is put out and studied by people in that field. I have never been comfortable when we change that to bring in the flea market, and I can't say that I'm comfortable here. Residential, I understand a great impact on the home builders and the prices. I do believe there comes a day, though, that we all have to bite the bullet and make this move. It's no different than when we started seeing seat belts and airbags put into vehicles. We, as leaders in a community, need to go forward with things that we know bring safety to our city and to our citizens, even if we know those are difficult. But I don't believe you ever lower the standards of what you feel is safety for those that live and work within your city. And I just cannot... If you broke this out, I could support, at the time being, to maybe not move into the residential quite yet, but to get people ready for that. But I can't support the business, the non-residential end of this. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Buckley, you mentioned that most times regulations kick in around for non-residential buildings around 12,000 square feet. What's the minimum in the code without the amendment for commercial properties?
It varies based on the occupancy of the building, what it's being used for. This amendment won't have any effect on assembly buildings, educational buildings, and I'm saying if the city keeps the amendment as written, 5,000 square feet. It won't have any effect on assembly buildings, educational buildings, institutional buildings, which are your hospitals and nursing homes, hospice care, things like that, and hazard occupancies, hazardous occupancies. The code will get you to a fire sprinkler system quicker than our local amendment, meaning in an assembly occupancy, you'll put in a sprinkler system right away with an occupant load of 100 people is all. So it has no effect on those types of occupancies. Where it really affects occupancies is business, which are your business office buildings, like this building, your mercantile buildings, and your storage and factory occupancy buildings, where we're telling them you need to have a sprinkler at 5,000 square feet, and the code says 12,000 square feet. There's a number of exceptions and variables, but the basic is 12,000 square feet. But again, only on those buildings that I mentioned, assembly, institutional, hazardous, and educational, will have sprinkler systems way before 5,000 square feet. They're almost required just as soon as you say educational occupancy or institutional sprinkle.
You also stated that this largely applies to non-industrial. What do the requirements look like for industrial spaces? I thought I saw on one of the slides that this applies, the code more applies to non-industrial, and I'm asking what the industrial sprinklers look like.
I'm trying to say, yeah, non-residential buildings that include all our commercial buildings and industrial buildings. I probably shouldn't use the term "non-residential," but I'm trying to group everything that is other than a one- and two-family dwelling or townhouse. You have those under the residential code on one side, and then you have everything else, which is commercial and industrial, everything else.
Would you say, in your estimation, in Commerce City, I would imagine most of the industrial buildings that we currently have within the city are above 5,000 feet?
Yes, certainly, especially with new construction, your factory and warehouse buildings, storage buildings, factory occupancies, most of your mercantile occupancies, King Supers, are well over the 5,000-square-foot rule and well beyond the 12,000-square-foot rule and need the fire sprinkler system. So we're really talking about a small segment of businesses that are building buildings that are about the size of this room, plus maybe the area of the dais and platform, again, small occupancies that fit into this category. When you're building a Cummins Rocky Mountain plant, when you're building a King Supers, you know you're going to sprinkle that building. You absolutely know it as soon as you sit down with your architects. It's the small buildings, you know, 7,000, 8,000, 10,000-square-foot buildings, that are really affected most by this, that, given a choice, that they may build in Adams County, right across the street, where they don't have to put in this fire sprinkler system.
Thank you.
You know, you may have already answered my question. I guess there's some sort of a scale based on occupancy where if you didn't have, if it was just totally a storage warehouse of sand, for instance, you wouldn't need sprinklers until it got up to something like 10,000 or 12,000 square feet. Is that right?
Yes, 12,000.
But even if it's 3,000 and there's a high occupancy, then you're going to require, the IBC of 2009 requires sprinklers.
That's exactly correct. The code takes into consideration the fuel loading and the combustibility and flammability of what's inside the storage building. Maybe you're manufacturing and storing aluminum aircraft parts with very low flammability and combustibility, or you could be storing sand. And we're telling these folks that you need to sprinkle those small warehouse buildings anyway. Other buildings, warehouse buildings, may have higher combustible and flammable contents. But in assembly buildings, higher people concern. So the code balances all those sort of factors to when fire sprinklers are necessary. So in assembly buildings from theaters, large meeting rooms like this, where people aren't familiar with their surroundings, aren't familiar with exits, sometimes they're dark movie theaters or places like that, the code obviously puts a high emphasis on the safety of those occupancies, and says you have to sprinkle those in a much lower area threshold than you would a storage warehouse storing aluminum parts.
So I guess the IBC then protects the health and safety of people, but maybe not so much of materials or merchandise?
My feeling, the provisions are equally represented in the code, and there's a balance in there.
But it's going to depend on the human occupancy, about how low you go to require the sprinklers.
That's true. There's certainly more value placed on humans than belongings.
Okay, but there is a safety concern built in there.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McElhany?
Thank you for the update, Mr. Buckley. I think the additional details today were very helpful. I guess the one thing I was looking for, and I think you touched on this briefly, and this might come in later testimony, but is there any evidence of any event in Commerce City building, known building history, where a building that we've required the sprinklers on has been the difference in that building being saved, where it would not have been required under the IBC? In other words, if we were to forego this provision and go strictly with the building code as written and fire code as written, can we find any examples where this 5,000-square-foot sprinkling requirement would have saved that facility or saved a life?
I've done some research into that, and I'm unaware of any fire history or incident that affected a small building that normally wouldn't require a fire sprinkler system. I'm not saying that it couldn't have happened. I'm just unaware.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Hopefully you can answer this. Our businesses, how often are they inspected by the fire department?
That's a question for Mr. LaPena. I'm not familiar with their processes. The fire code does provide a process for annual inspections of all non-residential buildings, but I don't know what frequency the district conducts those.
Councilwoman Carson, you'll have an opportunity to ask Mr. LaPena that as we proceed. I have a few questions for you, Mr. Buckley. I'm trying to wrap myself around this. I need to know why, first of all, why did we amend the code to a 5,000-square-foot limit, and when? I need to know, what was the original intention of doing that when no other cities have done
That's the $64 question, and unfortunately, I do not have a good answer. We found it back to the 1991 Building Code, so we estimate it's been around for 20-plus years. I can't find anything that tells us why it was brought forth. I can't find any archived documents or correspondence, anything that indicates why it was trotted out at the time, where it came from, the impetus behind it. I just, I'm at a loss.
Okay. My next question would be, I want to make sure that if, here's my problem. These guys go into hazardous situations, and of course, saving lives is number-one priority with the sprinklers. If someone came in today and pulled a building permit to build a warehouse for airplane parts that are all aluminum with a low risk of flammability that would meet that 12,000-square-foot mark before needing sprinklers, and that use was to change five years down the road and then become a building that would house hazardous chemicals or flammable products that would have originally met a quicker reason for the sprinklers? How do we make sure that they're sprinkled at change of use so that we don't end up with a scenario where we're allowing a situation that is non-flammable, and it turns into a situation that does require those sprinklers at an earlier time?
The city has adopted, beginning with the 2003 addition, the International Existing Buildings Code, and we use that code and apply it to all existing buildings. In fact, when you come back after you've got a certificate of occupancy, and you come back and do any work on that building, anytime later, we don't use the IBC. We go to the Existing Buildings Code. And that code requires you to bring your building up to current code standards based on a variety of scenarios, the level of alterations that you might be making to that building, if you're making any additions to that building that create a larger fire area, or if you change the occupancy classification of the building. If you convert a low-hazard warehouse to a moderate-hazard warehouse, then that change in occupancy, depending on circumstances, could drive a fire sprinkler system because of the new hazards that you are proposing for within that building. So the city gets another shot at buildings that go through changes of occupancy classification. So just because you build a 12,000-square-foot airport, or, excuse me, airplane part, storage building, and later it's going to be storing paper that's much more flammable and combustible, then there's a very strong likelihood that you would have to sprinkle that building just on the change in occupancy, as well as additions can drive that, making additions to the building. One of the driving factors is, would your building be required to have a fire sprinkler system today if it was built new? And so if that answer is yes, under the Existing Buildings Code, then more than likely you'll have to sprinkle it on a change in occupancy or an addition. We understand that maybe in warehouses that have been built in the 1950s where sprinkler technology was brand-new and fire sprinkler systems were very rare at that time. Well, that building can still be used, legally occupied and used all that time, but if it ever changes occupancy, and now that building would have to be sprinkled if it was built new, then that existing building may have to be sprinkled as a condition of changing the occupancy or making the addition or making the alterations.
Okay, let me expand my question a little further. If I have that building and the airplane part thing isn't going so well, so I just decide to change my use, don't come in, I'm not expanding my building, I'm not doing anything, I just pull the airplane parts out and I bring in the paper. How do you know, and how do we get to the point of requiring sprinklers so that we don't have this gap in a use that otherwise you wouldn't know unless there was an expansion of the permit?
Another good question. We rely heavily on the fire district for their inspections. Ideally, the fire district would have copies of certificates of occupancy for all buildings so they know its occupancy classification and several other factors. And if they walk in one day and all the aluminum aircraft parts are gone, and now it's stocked to the ceiling with paper, they're going to know that that is an occupancy violation, and they should be able to report it to the building department immediately. And the building department at that point has to put our legal hat on and make contact with the OR and say, "You are violating your certificate of occupancy, and you either have to return it back to its previous use, or you have to bring it up to code." And we would have the legal authority to enforce the code provisions and to make that building comply. So even if they didn't come in, like you said, for a permit for alterations or additions, then we still have the legal framework to capture that and correct it.
Okay. Is there anyone else on council that has questions for the staff at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this public hearing? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brett Steinbar. I'm with North Forest Office Space. I live in Commerce City at 10643 Joplin Street, and I also have the 104th Avenue Medical and Professional Office Park on 104th Avenue. Our first building and subsequent future buildings currently with the current amendment to the International Building Code do require sprinkler systems. We did put in a sprinkler system in our first building at the tune of, for just the raw materials, sprinkler, and the alarm system, of about $120,000 on a 10,000-square-foot building, or essentially $120,000 on a million-dollar building, or 12% of the additional cost of the building was just for the fire and sprinkler system. We also have to annually monitor and maintain that system. This is something that we do not have to do in any of the other two jurisdictions where we have the exact same construction and style office building in Colorado. We also have office buildings around the United States that do not need a fire sprinkler system. Commerce City or the South Adams County Fire Protection District is one of the only districts that have this 5,000-square-foot and above requirement. It does put an undue cost to us as the developer, and more importantly, it's an additional level of safety that may not necessarily be warranted. As a case study and a humorous example, we have an office building in upstate New York that someone left a candle unattended on a Friday afternoon in the office building. Candle burned down, lit paper on fire, lit some other paperwork and files on fire, but because of the International Building Code's design requirements between the type of materials inside the building, the amount of drywall, the amount of fire-rated ceiling tiles and so on, the fire actually snuffed itself out, and there was little more than some smoke damage to the entire office space, no damage to the adjoining units other than smell. And inside that one office, of course, some of the wall and drywalls burnt, we had to go in, tear out the drywall, replace a lot of the ductwork, and the space was brand-new. So the International Building Code through years and years, as the city staff have commented, have done their homework in the designs for, in our case, a B-class building or business occupancy. It stands the limit for our loading and our safety to snuff out the fires or help reduce the risk of fires in our case. Just one example. Let me point out a couple other things. As the city staff have mentioned, Commerce City or the fire district is the only district in this case, and I was not aware of it, in several of the jurisdictions around, that require it. I did know it, as we have projects in Brighton and Westminster, as well as a future project in Denver, that do not have this requirement for our style of office building. As a tenant and occupant of my own building, of course, I want it to be safe, and safe for all of my customers, and if it was absolute necessary to have these sprinkler systems in the building, I would, of course, want them. However, as a small business owner, and being that our buildings are under 10,000 square feet or around 10,000 square feet, all of our customers are small businesses. They're anywhere between 100 to 5,000 square feet on an individual business-by-business basis. basis, and every dollar that I can save in construction costs, I can then turn into either incentive dollars to attract those businesses, whether it's other tenant improvements or discounts in rent to get them to come to our office park, whereas it's a hindrance when I compare it to our other office parks in Brighton and Commerce City and Denver, where if I can't save that extra money in the construction and I have to put it into a sprinkler system, my other projects in other parts of the metro area are now price point more competitive than Commerce City. So while safety, of course, for me as a tenant of my own building is priority number one, safety of course, it goes a little bit above and beyond what the International Building Code, it's not just the local code, but the international code that's been thought of by several different engineers, architects, have looked at it for years as to what really is the minimum standard. So, thank you. Any questions for me?
Is there any questions? Councilwoman Carson, your light's lit up. Did you have a question for this gentleman? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I had a question in buildings. As far as competing for space and all, have you found it hard to rent your space out because of the added cost? Or are you using that as a way to attract business to say that your buildings are safe under the code and you encourage that?
I'm not sure if I completely understand your question.
Well, I mean, okay. First of all, do you find that it's a...do you think it's a...
Is it more attractive for our customers?
Yeah, less attractive or more attractive to have those sprinklers in there?
Our customers, it makes absolutely no difference whatsoever.
Okay, as far as leasing cost?
Cost-wise, it does make a difference. We figure that into our pro forma as to what the building costs are going to be and what our base rent needs to be to cover expenses and so on. Operating costs on, just call it after construction's over, operations, because we have to maintain and monitor and have a fire alarm monitoring company, just like you'd have on your house, but of course, there's annual inspections and so on and so forth. It adds about another 1%, well, it's not much, but 1% to the cost of, it's directly to our tenant that we have to pass on. So while that sprinkler system, the monitoring is the ongoing annual expense, it's the initial cost of the building where that's $120,000, an extra 12% of building cost in our size building. So for a 10,000-square-foot building or a $1 million building, you're adding another $120,000 of cost. So it does make it hard for the developer to be cost-competitive, let's call it with a project in Brighton right across the street that doesn't have that sprinkler system requirement, for tenant finish allowances, where a customer, a doctor comes in and says, "You know, I've got this great, you know, x-ray equipment or whatnot that I've got a custom-designed space for, add lead-lined walls, do something like that." And instead of saying, "You know what, I'm able to help offset some of those costs and absorb them, the tenant finish costs," I can't because I've now spent some of that extra money putting a sprinkler system in, in a space that normally wouldn't need it.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no one else, I do want to clarify one thing, though. While you were talking, you were talking about South Adams and their amendment. I want to make it very clear to the audience that that's not their amendment. That is an amendment to Commerce City's Building Code, correct? So it's not their amendment, it's the city's amendment, and so don't hold anything against them.
No, not at all.
It's us, and that's why we're considering it this evening, because it is a city's amendment.
And thank you for the correction.
Absolutely.
I stand corrected.
No problem.
And just on an ending note, I applaud the city's stance of looking at this amendment and really taking it into consideration. It was actually something that I brought up and others, other developers brought up at one of the initial summits that Michelle spoke about earlier, and so those summits really do pay off in looking at how the city is being business-friendly. And as a business owner, we really do appreciate you taking the time and paying attention to these small things that really do make a big difference.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the public hearing? Seeing no one, anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to the public hearing? Mr. Serna's on his way up. I'll call you in just a second. Ron, please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Serna.
Gierum Serna, 14122 East 100, Second Place. You're looking at money and what it costs. Don't lower your standards. At what cost? Take a look at these people that are here. Take a look at them. If something goes wrong and that fire would have continued and one of these lives is lost, what comes with it? Their families that won't see a father, a mother that won't see a son? Those are the things that you have to look also. It's not just the money, it's in protecting the people that are protecting us, and it takes a heck of a lot. Those are the things that you have to look at when you vote on this. I understand costs, but I think that if you push high standards and people feel safe, it doesn't make a difference whether it's a big building or a small building. You have a safe city. Listen to your experts, they know what's out there. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Mr. McElhany, did you have a comment?
I do. Mr. Serna, I appreciate the impassioned comments, but I want to be very clear, and I'm going to speak more as a son of a firefighter than as a council member for a moment. Please do not assume to understand fire safety in terms of what this sprinkler requirement speaks for. This is not about the safety of our men and women in uniform that are protecting us in the line of duty. The sprinkler requirement is designed to protect property. First and foremost, the size of these structures, if one of these structures were to become involved, the first matter of business is for the folks who occupy that property to exit the property. The folks that are going to come in and fight that fire are going to do so from the outside, and they're not going to, the sprinkler's not going to affect their ability to do so. That said, it is a dangerous profession, and if in the event, God forbid, one of these men or women have to get up on the roof of one of those buildings, yes, it can be dangerous. I have a dear friend of mine, my father, who was killed in the line of duty, who fell through a roof due to a burning building, but we don't need to add that sort of drama to this discussion without a basis.
Well, it's not a drama, it's just my opinion and how I feel.
And I appreciate that, but I think the point is, and we've heard it from our building official, there is yet to be one example brought forward of how this sprinkler requirement has solved for one structure or one life in Commerce City where this is the only place that that provision exists. We've heard, on the other hand, a fact-based account from a business owner and builder in our community who has given evidence of the same, the International Building Code and Fire Code provisions working just fine. So I'm looking for not what we believe to be an issue, but what we can show to be an issue. And if the code can't show that, and if you don't have evidence to that effect, then that's the challenge, right?
Just my opinion.
I appreciate that.
And in being proactive rather than reactive. And I'd rather be proactive in favor of the firemen than a death.
I'm with you.
That's all I got to say.
And I applaud that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serna. Ron, would you like to come up now?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Ron Lapenna, Fire Marshal, South Adams County Fire Protection District. As I spoke in the first reading to these ordinances, I am directly opposed to the ordinances as are being currently presented to City Council. The sprinkler ordinance has been, or the local amendment to the ordinance, to the code, has been in effect, as Mr. Buckley stated previously, since the early '90s, prior to my tenure as the Fire Marshal with the South Adams County Fire Protection District. I, as well as Mr. Buckley, I cannot speak to what the discussion was between the then building official and the then-fire marshal, but it is my understanding that it was instituted, brought forth to previous council as a life-safety measure for not only the occupants of the building and the public that enter these buildings, but also for the firefighters that go into the buildings in the case of an emergency, a fire as such. Respectfully, Mr. McElhany, sprinkler systems are designed to save lives. Property protection is way down the list on my priorities as far as preservation of life to all the members of citizens of Commerce City and also all the business within Commerce City, as well as utmost for the firefighters that go in there and save and respond to these structured fires. In regards to Ms. Carson's question about how frequent buildings are inspected within fire district, we were on a previous cycle of about every two years, the businesses would be inspected. We are now on a cycle based on our change in operations, daily operations, that we will be able to get into every business within one year, probably by the end of this year and starting in 2013, we will be in every business within one year. Again, this is a life-safety issue, and I'm in direct opposition to the ordinance as it's being proposed for three ordinances, not only for the building code, but for the fire code as well, and also for the International Residential Code, which has the, as it's written by the developers, who are supposedly the experts, that one and two family dwellings be sprinkled, and that provision is being removed out of the International Residential Code as well.
I have some people that have some comments, so please stay there.
I'm sure.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Lapenna, do you not feel that that sliding requirement where the square footage is lowered based on the higher occupancy, you don't think that that protects human life enough? Why don't you just set up a 5,000 or a flat square footage? Because as I understand it, if it's 5,000 and the human occupancy is at a certain level, then it's going to be required to be sprinkled?
That's correct. In the examples that Mr. Buckley detailed, in the high occupancy buildings, the institutional occupancy, educational buildings, assembly occupancy buildings, those buildings will be required to be sprinkled at a threshold less than the 5,000-square-foot. There are the conditions that occur in manufacturing occupancies and storage occupancies that are greater than 5,000 square feet and less than the threshold, and Mr. Buckley uses the threshold of 12,000 square feet. That can, is a variable as well. There are provisions in the building code that allow for unlimited square-foot, one-story buildings with certain provisions if the developer meets those. In that case, an unlimited square-foot building would not have to have a sprinkler system if this local amendment is removed from the ordinance.
Even if it was a high occupancy, high human occupancy?
There are many variables that go into determining, as the code is currently written by the International Code Council, whether there's a sprinkler system requirement at 12,000 square feet or whether it's unlimited square footage, based on the types of, the variables could be the types of construction.
Well, say if it was a 10,000-square-foot, single-story building, and you had 200 people working in there, and I'll ask this of Mr. Buckley also, what would be the sprinkler
There probably would not be a sprinkler requirement in a manufacturing building at 10,000 square feet.
Even if there were 200 people in there?
More than likely not, that's true.
Based on the fact that this, your example, Mr. Benson, is not an assembly occupancy, it's not an educational occupancy, and it's not an institutional occupancy, where those, in those occupancies, there is a occupant threshold that drives a sprinkler system. In a manufacturing facility, in a storage facility, things of that nature, there is no occupant load or occupancy requirement that drives the sprinkler system. It's simply the square footage and the types of construction. So in your example, a 10,000-square-foot manufacturing facility with 200 employees probably would not be required to be sprinkled as the code is currently written or being proposed.
What about under the IBC of 2009? It would not be required to be sprinkled? Because that's kind of, that doesn't sound right to me.
Well, generally, it's very unlikely that you would have a building that size that would also then have that number of occupants in them as well because the, and Mr. Lapenna's correct, when you're talking about assembly occupancies and institutional, the people or number of occupants is the primary concern in determining sprinkler provisions. In manufacturing and storage-type buildings, the concern goes to the inanimate objects, the amount of fuel loading that's in the building and its combustibility. In warehouses and manufacturing, much of the space is devoted to the storage of the materials being manufactured or stored, and because of that space being taken up in the building, it is very unlikely that you would have both a large building with lots of fuel loading and a high number of occupants. The code understands and recognizes that in those buildings, you generally have lower or fewer number of occupants. So the code shifts from people concerns to fuel-loading concerns in those type of occupancies.
You know, I'm also looking at this from the viewpoint of, the owner has the ability to make certain business decisions. In other words, if the owner wants to spend, in the example we just heard, another $120,000, you can sprinkler the building, unless you're required to and you're going to have to anyway, but that might cost him $120,000. But if the building burns down, and it burns down because of some reason that his insurance is not going to cover because he's not sprinkled, that becomes a pretty big capital loss to that person that's a business decision that he has to make if he wants to assume that risk. I guess any businessman has the right to do that unless he's going to put human life in danger. But that could be a huge loss to somebody. I don't know what the savings are. Mr. Lapenna, do you know what the savings, can you give an opinion about what the savings would be on property insurance, unsprinkled versus sprinkled?
I have had some interactions and discussion with some insurance carriers, not underwriters, and that's where the difference of opinion would come in. It would be my opinion strictly. There's as many variables in getting insurance premiums based on geography, not so much geography, but the location where the building is, what it's constructed of, crime history, things of that nature. There's a lot of variables that go into getting insurance premiums, just as for your homeowner's insurance, they check what the ZIP code is, things of that nature. There's those many variables as there are variables in the construction or the sprinkler requirement for a hazardous occupancy as there are for an institutional or educational occupancy.
So it's really impossible? So it's really impossible to render an opinion on that?
I can give an opinion based on a couple of conversations that I had with insurance carriers, and they were giving me some figures of anywhere between 10% to 15% discount. Could be greater, could be higher, or less.
Thank you.
Mr. McIlhany?
No questions.
No? Councilwoman Carson?
Thanks to everyone that came tonight and for the job that you do and the service you provide in our city. And please don't think that I'm doing anything other than just trying to gain knowledge for myself by any of my questions. So it's at the end of this year, Mr. Lepena, that buildings will start being inspected at least once a year, every, every non-residential.
Beginning in January 2013, that is our cycle, based on the number of inspections that we are completing now. And in 2013, that is our goal, and we will do everything in our power to get those inspections done on an annual basis.
When you do those inspections, is it common to find businesses in violation?
Yes, ma'am. Various violations of the fire code, they could be that the extinguishers are not up to date, they're required to be inspected on an annual basis, blocked exits, improper storage of flammable and hazardous materials, electrical issues. It's very rare, it does happen, but it's very rare that my inspectors come back from a business with a clean inspection.
Correct. And I'm not saying businesses are purposely doing things. Everybody has a job to do out here. And the job that you do when you go in there and you identify these issues, these are issues of safety. That's the reason, am I correct? That's the reason you go in and you say, this can't be stored here, this has to be moved out of this exit, because it's safety. And so we always want to provide as much safety as we possibly can to everyone in that building, everyone within anywhere.
That's our goal.
How many firehouses do we have in this city?
Excuse me?
How many fire stations are in Commerce City?
Eight.
And out of those eight, how many are staffed at all times, 24 hours, seven days a week?
24 hours, seven days a week, one.
Response time is huge, in my opinion, when you're fighting fires. So if you're coming from a house or you're in an area where there's, firemen are on call and they have to respond, and a sprinkler system now has started up, to me, it makes sense that when these guys roll up on the scene, the fire is not going to be as hot as it would have been if there were no sprinkler systems there.
Yes, correct.
We have, and like I said, I would like someday to see where every home built has to have sprinklers in it. We have TV shows on television, hoarders. That's got to be a hot box the minute that that, there's an ember in there. Even if you're the neighbor, I would assume you're in risk if you're living next door to that. We don't do inspections on homes, so I can fully see where at some point this nation should have safety things felt like that in for everyone. Because of all the uniqueness of our city, the type of industry that we have, and please don't take offense, that you guys are not in those stations and they're not manned 24/7, you guys are coming from home, from work, wherever you're responding from, it is a different scenario than if you're in another city that has eight houses and each, all eight of those firehouses have three, four of you stationed in there around the clock. There is a difference. And so I would assume that's one of the reasons why whoever it was that amended this years back, it was thoughts of that. Every time that truck rolls, lives are in danger because somebody, something is going wrong for somebody somewhere that you're responding to the call. And when these gentlemen have to respond to calls such as that, first of all, they have to get from point A to the firehouse, from the firehouse to the call. So it, this is important. Safety is just something that you can never, ever say, as Mr. Cerna said, you can't compare it to dollars.
I would like to address that issue of the staffing. Currently, the chief of the department is formulating plans and has been formulating plans throughout the last year and a half at least to staff other stations other than our headquarters on a periodic basis. Obviously, the goal is to have every one of our eight stations staffed 24/7. We just do not have the availability to do that right now, but we are working towards having two or three stations staffed on a more regular basis, and that is happening currently right now. Our response times from December of 2011 to May of 2012, our response time have dropped on an average from 11 to 12 minutes to six to seven minutes. We've cut our response time essentially in half. Our first response average time right now, first due engine on a first response call, we're averaging right around four and a half minutes on a first due engine.
Great. You guys do a good job out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes. I had a question. Is there a cost associated with when you guys do your annual inspections of buildings? Are there fines?
No, sir. There could be fines based on the violation, and it would be a violation of municipal ordinance if the violation continued for a period of time and it was severe enough in the opinion of the inspectors. We could, we do have the ability to have a municipal summons issued to the business owner to have the violation corrected. And that is totally a judgment call on the basis of the severity of the inspection, and that's a judgment call on the inspector's best judgment.
Okay. And the firefighters, as far as South Adams goes, that just is for Commerce City, not for unincorporated Adams County, not for parts of Brighton, not parts of Thornton or Northland, right? When you guys respond to fires, just for?
No, we respond to fires within a small portion of unincorporated Adams County, as well as, I would say, probably about 90% to 95% of Commerce City. As Mr. Buckley stated, there are two small areas that are within incorporated Commerce City that are not within our response jurisdiction. And those are the Greater Brighton Fire Protection District and the Sable Aljora Fire Protection District.
Now, out of the nine counties in South Adams, are there any other fire, any other fire departments that are strictly volunteer, not having a paid-based firefighters?
In the Denver metro area, South Adams County is the, as far as I know, the only 100% volunteer organization.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. McIlhany?
Thank you. Mr. Lieutenant, thank you, and to all the gentlemen for coming tonight. I have great appreciation for what you guys do every day. Can you tell me how many structure fires we respond to annually through South Adams County Fire that fall into the range of 5,000 to 10,000 square feet?
I cannot give you that specific statistic right now, Mr. McIlhany. I do not have that data as to whether it was a 100-square-foot building or a 10,000-square-foot building. We average...
In rough terms, I mean, would we say we have one a month, one a quarter, one a week?
You know, within the last three days, we responded on three structure fires. Previous to that, it could have been a month before we responded on a structure fire.
And that falls into that same parameter of the five to 10? And were any of those buildings sprinkled, sprinkled?
We've had numerous instances on structure fire reports. One of the officers just asked me about an incident that occurred, I couldn't give you a timeframe, it was in 2011, a commercial structure fire on 72nd and Udora. The building was sprinkled. It was sprinkled under the local amendment ordinance, and that sprinkler system extinguished the fire prior to any major structural damage and saved the building as well as the people within the building were able to get out. So there are instances that have occurred that sprinkler systems have activated, and in the case of, they will save the property, but their primary design is for life preservation, life safety.
And I appreciate that. I guess the part that I'm still just having a really hard time getting to, and maybe it's the way that my brain works, I'm, in my line of day job, I've got to make decisions based on fact and based on some level of predictability. And I am, I get the fact that if we put sprinklers in a building and there's a fire, it's going to have a great outcome, right? I mean, that's just simple logic. No sprinklers or sprinklers. But if I look at the more finely grained problem, and we've heard some of the commentary from Mr. Buckley, there's more to it than that, than just whether or not we're putting sprinklers or not. There are any number of other factors that determine the rate at which something's going to burn, how, you know, how intense the drywall is, what the structure is built of, what things are in the structure, that are all going to play into how long that building is going to sit before that fire moves beyond its origination or its point of origin. So with that said, I'm trying to look at a city that is desperately looking for new business and growth and balancing the residential explosion that we've seen in the north with jobs. And my constituents want retail, and they want to police the work, and they want money to pay for parks, and they want money to pay for roads. And when I can't, when I hear a business owner like Mr. Steinbar say, it costs me 12% of my building cost to add sprinklers to that office park, and I have personal discussions with constituents who want to open a business and there's not property available for them to open that business in, I'm looking at a number of different events that are all linked together, and it stems from the fact that it costs somebody like Mr. Steinbar more to do business here than it does somewhere else. And this is one item, right? We have a number of similar items that we've been working to eliminate from Commerce City in order to make ourselves more business friendly. So I take that. And on the other hand, I say, I can't have, I can't find one example where this provision, unique to Commerce City, has actually, other than the event that you've just described, has shown itself to be a critical and deciding difference for us to the positive. But we do have examples where we're not seeing a new business show up, we're not seeing someone invest, or we're seeing them invest less than they would have otherwise because of those anticipated costs. And so I'm trying to weigh whether or not the factors that are built into the IBC and the IFC in and of themselves are sufficient to save lives and, to the extent reasonable, save property. We've heard an example where property was saved, save for some minor drywall repair and some ductwork. That, to me, is an acceptable loss for somebody who was forgetful enough to leave a candle burning. And there are obviously any number of other factors that can cause that building to, or something to ignite. But I guess I'm trying to look at this in a more holistic manner to say, are we putting an undue burden and a limiter on growth and development and investment when there's really no black and white proof, where there's not substantial evidence that other communities have seen a similar need and are causing a change in their code to do so? I mean, if there were a rash of buildings that fell into that scope, or that range of 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, that all other factors would not have caused a sprinkler to be installed, and we could say that this provision was the difference, then we wouldn't even have this discussion. It would be a no-brainer. But we can't, or so far, we don't. And I guess I was hoping that some of that fact might have been available for us for consideration.
Well, as many variables as there were in the example that Mr. Steinbar cited in the New York facility, was it? As many variables as there are in that particular instance that caused very minor damage to the building, that same scenario could have occurred in another building that could have resulted in loss of life and complete destruction of the property.
Right. And I don't disagree. That's another possibility. But I guess, on the other hand, most of these facilities, given the size that they are, are provided with a significant number of exit points, right? They have to have a minimum number of points of exit from the building.
Yes, sir.
They have to, I mean, there are a number of factors that mean, if I've got a fire in that corner of my building, that I'm going to be, odds are, I'm going to be able to get out before that fire is a danger to me, right? Or these things are happening in off-hours.
There are minimum travel distances built into the building code for exit purposes, to get out of the building. Additionally, in a building that has a sprinkler system, those travel distances can be increased dramatically to allow you to get out.
Sure. But in that example, you're talking about the cost of a door, right? One less door that I might have to invest in versus an entire sprinkler system and ongoing cost annually of the monitoring and maintenance of that system, right? I mean, if I'm...
I understand, I fully understand the economic impact that is being considered and discussed here, but my main concern is life safety, life preservation of the firefighters and to the citizens and community of Commerce City.
And I am 200% behind you in those concerns, but I'm still looking for some supporting evidence that says that this is the key difference, right? That we have instances that this is going to make a huge difference in. I mean, where we did have a sprinkler, where we didn't have a sprinkler, and where this is going to be the deciding factor over and above what the other provisions in the code are going to account for. There's not an example in front of us tonight that helps show what a difference this is going to make. I mean, certainly a building's going to be...
From a residential occupancy standpoint, I can cite three instances right now.
And we're not talking, I'm not, I'm currently not talking about the residential considerations. I'm talking about the non-residential consideration.
Non-residential consideration, exactly. I do not have with me any statistics that show the square footage of a building and whether that building had a sprinkler system in it, and whether there was a fire in that particular building. I do not have those statistics.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ron, for coming in, and all of the Fire Department members that are here this evening. I have a couple of questions. First one's of Mr. Pat Buckley. When the area to the north of 88th Avenue was annexed, that area had a lot of different businesses, some that would fit into this classification. Has there been any of those buildings, because Adams County doesn't require, they don't have the 5,000-square-foot amendment?
Correct.
Have any of them had to come up to compliance to meet that 5,000-square-foot amendment? Or are there businesses that are in that area that were built without having to meet that amendment to our code that now would have to be brought up to that, that have had to upgrade to our existing amendment?
There have been none as a condition of annexation that... There have been none as a condition of annexation that were required to make modifications to come up to code. We accepted the buildings as is on annexation, and to my knowledge, nobody in that area has done work that would require the buildings to be brought up to code.
I guess my next question is to you, Ron. On that area over there, have you guys done any inspections, and found any buildings that were over 5,000 square foot, that did not have sprinklers that would be required to be brought up to the amended code that we have?
There are several, there are numerous buildings north of 88th Avenue that are, that were constructed prior to annexation, constructed under Adams County Code Regulations, that do not, did not, and do not have fire sprinkler systems in them. If those same buildings were to be built after the annexation, they would have been required to have a sprinkler system in them.
Correct. That's kind of where I'm going. With that said, you guys protect that area as well, and have protected that area, and there's areas of unincorporated Adams County that you currently still protect. Has, has the department ever went down and, and requested Adams County come to a 5,000-square-foot amendment to their building codes for the same safety reasons that you're asking us to keep the amendment?
We have, in previous code adoption processes with the Adams County Commissioners. In, in those presentations, there have been that request, but it has been denied from the, from the Commissioners as well.
Do you have any reasons why they denied that? Any circumstances of what made them deny those requests? Because I'm, I'm struggling-
An opinion?
Right.
It would be an economic stand, an economic-driven decision.
Okay.
As, as well as, another example, in my opinion, is the fireworks amendment, or the fireworks section of the Fire Code is amended out of the code in the county to allow for fireworks, where the city keeps their fire code, or their fireworks-
Amendment.
Amendment.
Right.
Another economic, in my opinion, purely econ, purely opinion, an economic-driven decision.
Okay.
Where fireworks caused untold numerous fires, weed fires, and even structure fires.
Right, and, and the reason I'm asking these questions, because I'm, I'm really on the bubble on this issue, knowing the fact that my son's a member of the volunteer fire department, and I've supported the department, and always will, for everything you guys do for this community. I just want to, I'm trying to balance our ability to be competitive with the market, and to be able to develop and, and draw those revenues that are necessary to have services here in the community for our residents, as well as to provide a safe community. And, you know, apparently, this 5,000-square-foot amendment is very important to you guys, otherwise, you wouldn't be here in force.
Exactly.
I, I just, I don't know if you've went back since some of the Commissioners have changed, I mean, in the, in the 90s, when we did this one, or whoever did it, if there was that kind of pressure on the county. Because I'm worried that you guys can fight fires in Commerce City, that you don't know which ones have sprinklers, which ones don't, which ones meet, meet our, our amendment to our code, and which ones don't. And if you find one, or if you have found one, that doesn't meet our, our amendment to our code, even in some of those annexed areas, how that process is that you would come in and require, ask the building official to make sure that those were upgraded? So I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get a feeling for the importance. I see that it's important tonight here, but is it just as important in our, in our areas of unincorporated Adams County, along 80th Avenue? Some of the areas that you guys have to, have to protect?
I'm obviously not as well-versed in the International Existing Building Code as, as Mr. Buckley is, but unless there's an occupancy change in those structures in the annexed area north of 88th Avenue, there, an occupancy change or addition that would raise the threshold to meet the International Existing Building Code, then those buildings would not be required to be sprinkled unless those scenarios take place. An occupancy change, and/or additions, or changes to the building that would meet the threshold of the International Existing Building Code.
Okay, I guess, I guess where I'm at, and maybe you can help me a little bit, I'm comfortable with the International Building Code for the requirements that are set forth for those fuel-type needs, in, in those commercial industrial-type businesses, 5,000 square feet, and, and in between 5 and 10, or whatever is, is required by the building code, and the 5,000. What I'm uncomfortable with is if that use was to change the gap in time before it was picked up on, if it went to a more flammable scenario, that gap in time before that requirement would be noticed, whether it's from, from your department on an inspection, to be able to, to trigger our staff to require that upgrade to the provisions of the IBC. Does that make any sense to you?
That's the only, it, it's a huge issue.
The gap is, the gap is what bugs me the most.
And that's the only way that we would know about it, is through our inspection process, and/or if the building owner were to come in and request a permit from the building official for a change of occupancy, and/or an addition, or some type of change within the building that would be driven by the IEBC to meet the current code requirements. There, there is that gap, and there's, the only way we would know about it is through our inspection process.
Well, that gap could be significant, from what I'm hearing tonight, if Joe builds a 10,000-square-foot building prior, or without having the, the requirements of the sprinklers because of the use, based on the IBC, and he changes that use without changing his structure, or without coming in for an occupancy permit, and that use becomes a much more flammable type of scenario, that the IBC would require those sprinklers at under 5,000 square feet. That could go, from what I'm hearing, and this is why I'm asking the questions, that could go five, 10 years, without ever being noticed. If you're not in there inspecting those buildings without sprinklers, that otherwise would, would have to have them if that use was changed, and without them coming in for a building permit.
Well, it would, it would not be a, a five- or 10-year period. As I mentioned earlier, by 2013, January of 2013, we will be on an annual cycle.
Into every business.
So that gap will be, I, I would, I would say, at a maximum, it would be a one-year gap, before we would see that. If we were in a building in January 1, did the inspection, everything was okay-
They changed the use?
January 2, the owner decided to change the occupancy, we would not know about it until we got back around to that cycle in January 1 of the following year.
I get you, so the gap that I'm talking about could be one year?
Correct.
Okay. So the questions I have right now, thank you. Mr. Lapenna, I don't see any others. Is there anyone else in the audience who, who would like to speak?
Counsel, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of any of the ordinances that are being considered on this public hearing this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What are the desires of counsel? Mr. Mackel Downey?
Just to clarify, so that all the councils are aware, we're going to need to vote on each ordinance separately.
We're going to take the ordinances individually.
Right.
Ordinance 1898 will be the first ordinance. Councilwoman Carson?
Just so I don't get confused, which one is it that has, it's 1807, thank you.
That's the 5,000-square-foot amendment? Okay, thank you.
It affects, the amendment affects two codes.
Okay.
The International Building Code, under this ordinance, 1898, and under the ordinance adopting the Fire Code as well, I don't know that ordinance number off the top of my head.
1807, is that the one? I want to make sure before we get going-
1898 and 1907.
1907. Mr. Moreno?
All right. In that case, I would move to, move to have ordinance 1898 follow ordinance 1907.
Okay, I have a second to that. Mr. Mackel Downey?
I was prepared to make a different motion.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Moreno's request? Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to put those two ordinances in succession during our, our hearing. So, I am willing to, let's, let's just take both of those right now.
Okay.
1898, is there a motion? Mr. Mackel Downey?
I'd move to approve ordinance 1898.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1898. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Repealing Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Enacting Division 1 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to Provide for the Adoption of the 2009 Edition of the International Building Code, Including Appendix Chapters C, E, F, G, and I, and All Standards Contained in Such Code, and Appendix Chapters as Amended herein, Providing for the Issuance of Permits and Collection of Fees Thereunder, and Providing for Penalties and Civil Remedies for Violation of the Provisions of Said Code and This Ordinance."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I have something. I will be voting in opposition to this, and, and I wanted to explain myself before I voted, because I talked to some of the, I primarily, I talked to Mr. Teeter, and I'm really struggling with this, because in my heart, to do my job as the mayor, I want to make sure that we make sure that we're competitive in the marketplace to draw, to draw development into our community, and this is inhibiting that. There's one scenario where I know we were building a salt dome, and that salt dome contained nothing flammable, concrete structure, one light, and salt. Over 5,000 square feet, we would have been required to sprinkler that building. I still have a problem with that amendment if there's not some common sense used in how that is laid out. I think that there, there should be, when, when the fire department and the city look at a development that is non-flammable at all, that there should be a way to amend that to allow some of these uses that otherwise couldn't burn if you poured gas on them. I mean, it's a concrete building with salt. That's where my frustration is with the 5,000 square feet, because it's, it's a line drawn in the sand, and there is, is nobody that is looking at it from a common sense standpoint of whether it'll burn or not. If it's 5,000 square feet, you're going to do it. That I have a concern with. And I told Rick earlier, I said, you know, in my heart, I feel like I need to, I need to pass this, because I, I truly believe in the IBC code, and I, I feel that part of it, truly, that's how I feel it should be. I wear the South Adams Fire Department on my sleeve in making that decision, though. The one thing, and the only one thing, that has made me reconsider how I voted the last time, is that one-year gap. And if that one-year gap could be filled, I would be supportive of this, of this ordinance. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, ordinance 1898 has passed. It's been approved. Next item on the agenda.
Hold on, sir, I want to get the no votes.
Yes, ma'am.
Carson, Teeter, Ford, and Douglas. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinance, oh, we're going to go with 1907.
Okay, that's going to take, you've got to give me a second.
So you're going to have to readjust down there?
I got to do some adjusting, yeah.
No problem.
Give me one second.
We'll wait for you.
So which one, 1907?
1907.
1907.
Okay, ordinance 19-
Oh, I'm not ready yet.
You're not, well, you, you tell me then, because it popped up, and I thought, okay, she's ready.
Okay, I'm ready for you, sir.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Bullock, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I am.
Move to approve ordinance 1907. Okay, Mr. Mackel Downey?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1907. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
I'll read.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Repealing Article 13 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 10 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to Provide for the Adoption of the 2009 Edition of the International Fire Code, Including Appendix Chapters B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J, and All Standards Contained in Such Code, and Appendix Chapters as Amended herein, Providing for the Issuance of Permits and Collection of Fees Thereunder, and Providing for Penalties and Civil Remedies for Violation of the Provisions of Said Code and This Ordinance."
Okay. Thank you, is there any discussion? Ms. Moreno?
Thank you. I just want to explain my reasoning for, for my vote on 1898, and on 1907. I have the absolute utmost respect for what the South Adams Fire Department does for our community. My vote is not driven by, by economic reasons, but as a matter of consistency, and as a matter of making Commerce City more compliant with other municipalities and districts that surround us. There's very few votes that you take, I think, on this council, that will leave you considering for weeks later whether or not you did the right thing. This is one of those votes, and I just want to explain my reasoning.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Seeing no further comments, I'll ask for a roll call vote. KD, you need a vote? There you go. Let the record show that ordinance 1907 also is approved, 5 to 4.
Six to four.
I need a minute again.
I'll give you a minute, you tell me when you're ready.
Going back to the top, right?
Ordinance 1899 is the next one that we will be taking.
Okay, sir, we should be good.
Okay, thank you. Next item, ordinance 1899. Mr. Moreno, do you have a motion ready?
Move to approve ordinance 1899.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1899. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Repealing Article 5 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 2 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to Provide for the Adoption of the 2009 Edition of the International Residential to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Residential Code, including Appendix Chapters A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, K, M, N, O, P, and Q, and all standards contained in such code, and Appendix Chapters as amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code and this ordinance."
Excuse me, before we start voting, Mr. Benson is not at the dais.
I'll wait just a minute, let him come back, if everybody's okay with that. Should only take a couple of minutes. With the extra time that I have, though, I wanted to mention that there was a young lady here this evening with the American Cancer Society that intended to speak during citizen communication. And as soon as we are done with this public hearing and taking care of these ordinances, I will allow that young lady to have an opportunity to speak. So I will change a little bit of how we're doing things. She didn't get the opportunity, and I should have asked if there was anybody else in the audience. And she has waited through all of this important stuff that we're taking care of here for that opportunity. So hopefully, everybody's okay with that, because I feel compelled to allow her the opportunity. Mr. Benson, we were waiting on you. Ordinance 1899 has been, a motion and a second, title's been read, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, the motion, the ordinance has been approved, eight to one. Next item on the agenda, ordinance 1900. Mr. McEldowney?
Move to approve ordinance 1900.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1900. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Article 6 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 3 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Existing Building Code, including Appendix Chapter B, and all standards contained in such code and Appendix as amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code and this ordinance."
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, the ordinance 1900 has passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1901. What are the desires of council? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve ordinance 1901.
Mr. McEldowney?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1901. The attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Section 21-34 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code in its entirety, repealing Article 7 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, enacting a new Division 4 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code entitled Property Maintenance Code to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, including Appendix Chapter A, and all standards contained in such code and Appendix, as such code and Appendix are amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and the collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of such code and this ordinance."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. McEldowney, your lights still on?
No, this was for the motion.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, ordinance 1901 has passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1902. What are the desires of council? Mr. McEldowney?
Move to approve ordinance 1902.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1902. The attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Article 8 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 5 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2006 edition of the International Code Council Electrical Administrative Provisions as amended, and the 2011 edition of the National Electric Code NFPA 70, including all standards contained therein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code and this ordinance."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record reflect that ordinance 1902 has been passed unanimously. Next item is 1903. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve ordinance 1903.
Mr. Moreno? A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1903. The attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Article 9 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 6 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Plumbing Code, including Appendix Chapters B, C, D, E, F, and G, and all standards contained in such code and Appendix Chapters, and the 2009 edition of the International Private Sewage Disposal Code, including all standards contained in such code as those codes and appendices are amended herein, and providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said codes and this ordinance."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, it's passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 1904. Ordinance 1904. Mr. McEldowney?
Move to approve ordinance 1904.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1904. The attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Article 10 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 7 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Mechanical Code, including Appendix Chapter A, and all standards contained in such code and Appendix, as such code and Appendix are amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code and this ordinance."
Thank you. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that ordinance 1904 has been approved unanimously. Ordinance 1905. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve ordinance 1905.
Mr. Douglas?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1905. Is there any, I'll ask the attorney to read the title first.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Article 11 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 8 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code entitled International Fuel Gas Code to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Fuel Gas Code and Appendix Chapters A, B, C, and D as amended, governing fuel gas systems and gas-fired appliances, providing for the issuance of and collection of fees for permits under the 2009 International Fuel Gas Code, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code, Appendix Chapters A, B, C, and D, and this ordinance."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. McEldowney, your lights still on? Is that from before?
This was from before.
Mr. Douglas, do you have discussion?
No.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Let the record show that ordinance 1905 has been approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1906. Mr. Douglas?
Move to approve ordinance 1906.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1906. The attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "In ordinance repealing Article 12 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, Enacting Division 9 of Article 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code entitled International Energy Conservation Code to provide for the adoption of the 2009 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code as amended, providing for the issuance of and collection of fees for permits under the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code and this ordinance."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Moreno?
Just on this item, Mr. Buckley, in the packet, it was referenced that developers and home builders will have a six-month compliance date, or soft compliance, for some of the energy provisions included in this. We didn't leave anything out of the code, right? We're just giving them six months to become compliant?
That is correct. We've taken nothing away from the Energy Conservation Code. Six months, soft compliance only.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that ordinance 1906 has been approved unanimously. We've already taken care of ordinance 1907. And now we will get into our resolutions. A resolution, yes, sir. I'm gonna let the lady speak. I'm glad you stopped me. But that's not why you stopped me, is it? Nothing. Jim, what do you need? I got Mr. Cordero covered. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. I'm going to stop for a second and allow the young lady that's here from the American Cancer Society to come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Seal Martin. I'm with the American Cancer Society. And our address is 2255 South Onida Street in Denver.
Yeah, I think it's on. Yeah, it's on.
Am I not speaking loud enough? I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Like I said, I'm from the American Cancer Society. And I want to mention to you an event that we're bringing to the Commerce City area, Relay for Life. It'll be the first one we have in this area. There's 25 in the surrounding Denver metro area. So this is gonna be one that's unique to the Commerce City community. American Cancer Society offers a lot of programs to cancer patients and their families and caregivers. And Relay for Life is a way of letting those in need know about these programs. Adams County is an underserved community, and that's not because of the funding, it's because they don't know about the programs. So what I'm here to do is let you know about Relay for Life, which is, like I said, a way to introduce these programs, such as Road to Recovery, which provides free transportation to patients to and from doctor's appointments. Those programs are funded by Relay for Life, which is our largest campaign for fundraising. And what Relay for Life is, is an overnight event where we have teams and participants come out and raise money. And it's overnight, because cancer never sleeps, so for one night, neither will we. So what I'm here for is asking your support and getting behind this event. It would be great to let Adams County Commerce City know about the services provided, the free services provided for your constituents. And Relay for Life is a great way to do that.
Great. Thank you. I would ask the staff, would it be appropriate to do a proclamation or something in that matter to bring it to the attention of the residents? Jim?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would you prepare?
The event is actually July 28.
Where?
July 28.
28, and it's being held at Prairie View High School in Henderson.
Great. Can you get the information to our staff? Ms. Ram Cordero is probably the person to make sure that he has all of that. And if it's sufficient to the council, we can take a look at a proclamation to help support it and to let our residents know more about it.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thanks.
There's, I think there's some comments from people up here. I'm getting a lot of wait, don't send it away yet. So just hang on for a second. Mr. Bullock?
She answered my questions, the time and the date and the event.
Okay. Mr. McEldowney?
Thank you very much for hanging in there to give us this valuable update. I guess the question to council and staff, part of what I heard in this request was to help get the word out, because it's undercommunicated. I guess proclamations are great, and they're good for us, but they don't necessarily do much to get the word out beyond the dais and the few folks tuned in. So do we have time sufficient to get this in our next city publication? And if not, or if we do, I guess another tool would be to see if we can use the city's Facebook and social media tools as well to help promote this, so that we can help promote in whatever manner we can, I guess, to help get that word out for participation and awareness.
Yes, I'll follow up with Michelle Halsted. Our city news for June just came out.
Okay.
And given that this event is at the end of July, I think we should be able to accommodate much more public media that we have got at our disposal.
That would be great.
Thank you. Good idea. Mr. Benson?
Could you explain a little bit more about exactly what the event entails?
Yes. So it is an overnight event where we have teams and participants come out and walk a track. So since we will be at the high school, we will be using the track around their football field. And we have teams that are made up from anywhere from eight to 12 people, ideally, that will fundraise throughout the time period leading up to the actual event and then the night of. So during the night, we have different ceremonies where we celebrate those who have won the battle or currently winning the battle against cancer. We celebrate those who have lost the battle and are no longer with us, and really remember them. And then we also celebrate the caregivers, because they are kind of an unsung hero in all of this. So we do have some ceremonies, but it really is a great time. It's a great family atmosphere. With it being at the location that we have it, it's fenced off, so it's safe for children to come out, and it's in a great location. Lots of lights, we'll have lots of entertainment, food. And like I said, it is a fundraiser, so we are asking people to donate and bring money in to donate to the American Cancer Society. But it brings funds in for research and for programming that stays in this area. It's not fundraising for services in Montana. It stays in this area. So it is a local event.
So the event would start, what, at 3:00 on a Saturday afternoon?
We're gonna allow people to set up starting at 3:00, and then we'll actually start at 6:00 PM on the 28th.
Then it goes through 9:00 the next morning?
Well, if you want to stay that long, well, I'll be leaving around 6:00 AM. So we do dusk to dawn.
Are you looking for sponsors? Are you gonna be trying to get the city to sponsor?
That would be great if we could, yes. It is a great marketing tool for the city. We do have publications that we've been handing out and will be putting up. And we also have T-shirts that everyone will wear that'll be specifically branded for those that are sponsors. But if we could have the city, that they would like to do a team or sponsor, that would be fantastic. We could do, we have all kinds of fundraising ideas that would be available. But yes, sponsorship would be nice.
Well, can I ask for a direction from the council that we asked the staff? And I think Mr. Cordero has already done a lot of legwork on this to find out what that might require. I guess it's money, expenditure of money.
It is.
So just to find out what that might require and bring it before the council, so the council can make a decision.
Okay, I have a request from Mr. Benson to ask the council if they would be favorable of having the staff look further into this and bring us back some information. Is there a second? Mr. Moreno?
I will second the request.
I have a motion and a second to give staff- I have a motion and a second to give staff direction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's approved. And now Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you for being patient in a very long meeting this evening. A lot of the questions that I wanted to ask were already answered, but I did find out about this Relay for Life just recently, and so I think it's a wonderful event. Just wanted to, one thing, when you say fundraising, it's like getting sponsored by friends, family, coworkers, so there's not specifically an entry fee for participants? Is that how I understand it?
Correct. We ask that each participant raise about $100, but we don't, you know, take money at the door or anything like that.
Okay, all right. Well, I myself am very interested in participating, so I challenge my colleagues here to join me and maybe form teams of your own, or we can form one big council, mayor council team. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McElhany?
To piggyback on Councilwoman Elliott, I was going to suggest that we formalize a team and challenge staff to raise a team as well. I would think that if we have some mix of council and spouses participate, that would probably make a team, and then challenge staff to do a team as well. I'm looking at the website now for the event, and unfortunately, it looks like you've got fairly low participation or registration now with 53 days out to the event. So I think anything we can do to make this first event in Commerce City a big success, looks like it would be a big help, so.
Thank you.
Would council be up for walking?
Oh, I'm up for it, yeah. I mean, I walk all the time. Might as well walk for a reason.
On each team, somebody's got to be walking the whole time. I mean, one person doesn't have to walk the whole time, but isn't that the rule, that somebody from each team is supposed to be up and walking? Or running, you can run.
Right. We do try to have someone out on track the whole time, but yes, some people do run all night. Again, I won't be one of those people, but you're welcome to do it if you'd like.
I won't be one of those people either. But we, you know what, I think there's enough interest that you will have some participation from the council and hopefully from staff, and we'll look forward to what our staff brings back to us on what we can do to help promote it.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry that you sat through something you probably didn't want to have to sit through.
I know all about sprinklers now, so it's okay. I don't mind.
Perfect.
Learn something new every day, right?
Great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll get back on track. Okay? Resolution 2012-14. Mr. McElhany, are you prepared?
I am prepared. I move to approve Resolution 2012-14.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-14. The city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, Making Legislative Findings That An Area of the City of Commerce City Is Oblited Area and Appropriate for An Urban Renewal Project in Case Number URB-002-12."
Thank you. Does the council have any comments or questions at this time regarding Resolution 2012-14? Seeing none, I can do a voice vote on this one, correct?
Yes.
I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now on to ordinances on first reading. First one is Ordinance 1887. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Ordinance 1887.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 1887. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of the Land Development Code."
One moment, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote?
Not yet.
No? Not yet. Now, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
No, not yet.
Okay.
No.
And you guys think I'm the one that's making the meetings go late? I had to throw that out there for you, Laura.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Let the record show that Ordinance 1887 is approved on first reading unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Ordinance 1911. Mr. McElhany?
Move to approve Ordinance 1911?
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 1911. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending The 2012 Budget Of The City Of Commerce City, Colorado By The Recognition Of The Colorado Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Board CATPA Grant Award In The Amount Of $20,100 For Cameras, Administrative Costs, Overtime Costs, And Annual Maintenance Fees For PIPS System And 12 Self-Software And Authorization Of The Expenditure Thereof."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the ordinance is introduced, 1911, introduced unanimously. Next item is Ordinance 1913. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Ordinance 1913 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Second to motion.
I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1913. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending The 2012 Budget Of The City Of Commerce City, Colorado By The Recognition Of The Adams County Open Space Grant In The Amount Of $465,000 To Be Used For Fairfax Park Renovations Which Include A Perimeter Trail, Landscaping, New Shelters, Tables, Barbecue Grills, Trash Cans, And A New Parking Lot And The Authorization Of The Expenditure Thereof."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Douglas, I thought you were on here from the one after the four.
No, sorry.
No problem.
A question on this, sorry about that. A question on the grant, the $465,000, that's, all those funds are from the open space grant, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, Ordinance 1913 has been introduced unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 1914. Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve Ordinance 1914.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1914. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending The 2012 Budget Of The City Of Commerce City, Colorado By The Recognition Of The Adams County Open Space Grant In The Amount Of $529,000 To Be Used For Fairfax Park Renovations Which Include A Redesigned Court Area With Two Basketball Courts, Two Tennis Courts, Two Handball Courts, Improvements To Three Ball Fields, And Undergrounding Power Lines And The Authorization Of The Expenditure Thereof."
Thank you. Now, are there any discussion? Mr. Benson?
I will never vote against any ordinance that includes two handball courts. And Mr. Gaylor, you got it right. They're not racquetball courts, they're handball courts. These are three-wall courts, and I don't know that they're going to be included in this money right here, but they're going to happen eventually, and that's a great thing.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Ordinance 1914 has been introduced on first reading unanimously. Let the record reflect that. Ordinance is on second reading, Ordinance Z891-12. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Ordinance Z891-12.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Z891-12. Will the attorney please read the title?
This would be on second reading. Title reads, "An Ordinance Rezoning From AG To C1 Zone District The Property Described In Exhibit A Attached Here To Made Apart Hereof Located At 8702 Rosemary Street, Commerce City, Colorado And Amending The Zoning Map Of The City Of Commerce City, Colorado To Reflect Said Rezoning."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that Ordinance Z891-12 has been approved on second reading. Now we'll get into reports. Mr. Gaylor?
Administrative council business.
Oh, I'm sorry, council business. I was trying to get you guys out of here a little early. Mr. McElhany, do you have some council business?
I do. I think several of us received an email from a citizen with questions about expenditure, in summary, expenditures on parks, north versus south, the rate of taxation in the north versus comparable communities. And this is a subject that I think I bring up every year at retreat time when we talk about the perceived inequities of our residents in the north versus elsewhere in the community. And one of the themes that's echoed, or repeated rather, in the email that we received this time is this, again, this oversimplified sense of, I have a house of X size, of X value, and I'm paying Y dollars a year in taxes, and the perception that those dollars are all somehow earmarked for the city. And so this fundamental gap of understanding that says the tiniest percentage of those taxes are actually coming back to Commerce City. And these are deeply-held perceptions, or misperceptions rather, that exist in our community. And the concern I have is that, you know, this email is obviously received today, but literally in conversations this weekend and over the prior several weeks, I've had several conversations with folks on this, and we've certainly had the subject come up in recent council meetings with regard to the Fairfax Park Initiative that we just talked about, and what we were going to do with dollars that we didn't spend in 2011, and how we might reappropriate those funds to enact or solve for other projects. Rather than continue to have these questions come forward, we need to put real effort forth to figure out how we help our community understand. You know, a fire department who, I think most of us have fought to see, secure a win on the ballot to help raise much-needed dollars, has had a hard time, and will continue to have a hard time getting that to pass in the north. Our school district in the north is at a hard time getting a ballot measure to pass because of the perceived ceiling, if you will, on taxes that we pay in the north. Folks don't understand the person in their tax bill that goes to their HOA slash metro district, the county, the GID, et cetera. And so when they write a check for $3,500 a year, or $4,000 a year, or have that fraction taken out, which is larger than a fraction, it's like half of some people's monthly mortgage payment, they don't understand why those dollars don't come back in the form of a road, or a park, or otherwise. So before we show up to our budget retreat this fall, can we agree that we need to do something to help educate? Obviously, we have the Quality Community Foundation that's in motion, but we need the help of our communications department and our finance department to put together some material, more than just a dollar bill that shows where the taxes go, that helps as a tool for education that we can all have at the ready when a citizen asks us, well, where do my dollars go? That we can hand over, that we can, you know, I think we need to run literally feature-type pieces, front page, if you will, in our city news, that help educate the community on where these dollars are going and where they're not going, so that when we do come forward with something from the Quality Community Foundation, or the district, you know, whether it's the water district, or the fire department, or the school district come forward with a measure, they understand how that fits into the overall scheme of the tax bill that they're paying each month. I don't have the answer. I think these are pieces of the solution, but the fact that we continue to have these questions tells me that we're not doing a good enough job helping our community understand, and then we need to do so more effectively, more regularly, more consistently. So I want to put that out there for folks' consideration and see if I can secure your support to further that discussion.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. McElhany. I think we all received the same email, and I would agree with you that a house in this part of Commerce City pays less overall taxes than where I live. However, the city realizes the same amount of money.
Yep.
Regardless, because the things that are making the taxes higher for where I live is because I'm a member of the GID. The GID is going to pay for that infrastructure that was able to help us to develop north of what our original boundary was. So that money that's above and beyond goes to that. What I do think, and I'm going to speak very candid, is that there's a misperception that the south gets more parks, or more this, or more that than the north. I could tell you, living in the, growing up in the southern portion of Commerce City, I would have loved to have had a King Supers like his going up north, and I'm glad that I'll have that opportunity to shop there, because it's close to my home now. We have a great golf course on that part of our community. We have a great rec center on this part of our community, and we need to all, after hearing what happened at the previous council meeting, we need to all remember that we're a part of one community. And when council members get into, or worked up about, how come this area is getting more than this area, we further make that divide, that it's two portions of a community. We are one community. And I think after struggling with this, and after talking to members of this council, I think that it's important that we have a plan that shows our recreational opportunities and where the money's being spent, so that we all know, and that our residents know, that it has been spent equitably between all areas of our community. I know that we had a grant, and we provided not too long ago, a lot of new trail opportunities up in the north part of our community. We approved the opportunity to move forward to get the lake piece and some of those open space pieces. But I would really like to see the Parks Department come forward with a plan that we could show all of our constituents that we are spending our money for recreation equitably between all parts of our community, east, west, north, south, it doesn't matter. But if this council can't quit arguing or just disagreeing on how funds are spent for recreation, we're going to continue to divide this city, and that's one thing that I don't want to see happen. I want to see us bring it back more closely together. And with that being said, as part of that reappropriation, I have already talked to Mr. McBroom and asked him that I would like to see some opportunities for some dollars to be spent on some park enhancements up in the northern area that would help to enhance some of the future park site, pick one site, I don't care which site, but I want to be able to show our residents that we are being equitable about how that money's spent. And I think that the best way to handle it, instead of saying, well, you got this, we need this, back-and-forth bantering, we need to see a real plan from the Parks and Rec Department about what comes online, at what times, and when folks can expect to have those services near their homes, so that, and some of it is tied to development. And I will tell you, the King Supers development is going to help a lot. And I will tell you, the King Supers development is going to help a lot. And the businesses that'll come with the King Supers development, that, that'll help that draw. I was just at ICSC conference with our staff, and the amount of contacts that we made and the amount of interest that we have for our community, both in the north part and in the south part of Commerce City, is unbelievable. It's better than what I had, had ever imagined the interest was at this time with the economy. Those are the things that help create those type of services. And the, the newer part of our community is growing, not as rapidly as it was. But as it continues to grow, there will be an added need for more and more recreational opportunities. And I know that the Parks Department has to lay that out based on revenue streams and things of that nature. But I'd like to see something, because I am really getting tired of hearing about, you got this, we need this, you got this, we need this. And you hear it from all residents from all over the community, and I hear it from council members, but if this council doesn't stop and start working towards an equitable solution to make sure that we are representing all of our residents within this community, we are going to continue to divide the two parts of our community. So my request would be to have the Parks Department come forward with some kind of a, a, a plan for future park sites and when they would develop and how they would develop. And keep in mind that I want the equitable scenario, so that all of our residents feel like and know that they're being served by this community for their recreational needs. That's all I have to say on it. I have several people on the, here to speak. Who is signed up to speak on this particular issue before I move off of it? Okay, Councilwoman Carson.
Just to say that when we do these neighborhood outreaches, I still think this is where we should do these road shows and that we set tables up with departments, we get a great respond, lots of citizens show up to these. And if you can go up to that table and say, we don't get parks in the north, and somebody, staff, explain to you exactly what we explain, I think that's the best way to reach our citizens out there, is, is like I said, that, that we promote a road show that goes out into these parks when we do these outreaches. I've seen other cities do it. I think it's a great thing. We can invite the water department, if they would like it, to participate, the fire department, the schools districts. But when people can get that information and come, come for their neighborhood picnic, which they were going to come anyway, and, and just go to whichever table they want the information from, I, I just see this as community-friendly and that people then will reach out and get the information that they're looking for, so.
Ms. Moreno. A different issue? Mr. Benson.
It's the word, the use of the word equitable, which is something that I've, I guess, argued about for some time. Equitable treatment is not necessarily the same as equal treatment. It's two different things, two different things. And equitable treatment of all parts of this city is what should be required here, not necessarily equal treatment, but equitable treatment. They might be the same thing under some circumstances, but it's equitable treatment that we should all be looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, and we do have outreach this month. As far as the parks, as far as identifying HOA parks versus city parks, I think that that would be nice to have. Also, to show people where those are located, as far as the north versus the south, as far as the balance of the parks and how those were made up and how the developers decided to put their own parks in their own development area. So if we could have that as well, that would help out.
Mr. McAldonie.
Yeah, I was just going to tie back to my original comment to say, I know it's obviously a tight turnaround, but to the extent that we can have some of that framed or available for the outreach, obviously all the better. But I would also suggest that we consider having council play a more active role. You know, I've seen council participation at the outreaches go sort of multiple directions, where folks are just sort of hanging out and where we've actually manned a table. And I think, you know, where I've tried to plug myself in, you know, whether it's with planning or something, where we were talking about the comp plan or whatever, I think having us plugged in so that we're in a fixed place as people come by, if we can play some role in helping speak to material that staff can put together on this subject, I think all the better that that come from us, that, that we're able to help convey that message, we understand that message, we can reinforce that message. Instead of putting it all on staff to stand at those tables during the course of the outreach, you know, I, I think it's a more effective use of our time than what we often do is get stuck with, you know, wandering around the crowd and we don't always maybe have the greatest possible impact that we could. And so I, I just think if, if staff's able to do anything to help prepare something on this matter, that would be, would be great if council's on board with maybe taking that approach.
Okay. Mr. Bullock.
Yes, and when we're communicating this, when we bring down the fact that HOA parks versus community parks, be sure to realize that the city required a lot of the developers to put those parks in, because if it had been up to them, there'd be nothing but houses up there, you wouldn't have a park. We're the ones that, we were one of the leading cities that started the impact fees that went back to the schools in order to, to school sites and everything. So when we communicate our message, let's communicate the whole message that those HOA parks are a grant and a benefit from the city, because a developer, the only thing he wants to do is develop and sell homes. Those parks came at a price because he did not want to put them in, and the city required that they put the HOA parks in, in order to have park space.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno, new item.
Yes, I had a resident bring up a concern about fire pits in the city and regulations or, or lack thereof actually, that we have in the land development code. I'd like to request a study session for a future meeting around fire pits and any regulations that we can put in to make them more safe.
Anyone else have anything new that they want to bring up during this time? Councilman Douglas.
Yes, well, I had a question on campaign signs, yard, yard signs. I couldn't look it up, but do you know what size you're allowed to put in your yard as far as campaign sign? It can't be like four by eight feet, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head, but we can definitely get that answer for you.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, if you'd have Dave Letter or somebody send, send us all an email, give us a heads up on that question. Thank you. Councilwoman Carson.
It was some time ago, actually, it was probably close to last summer or something, that Mr. Newberry came in from Bell Creek, speaking of vandalism that was taking place He was under the understanding, and I also was under the understanding, that we were going to put a security camera up in Bell Creek. I don't think it's ever happened. They are experiencing pretty good rash of vandalism there again. So can we take a look into this? It's, yeah, thanks.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, we're on the Bell Creek subject, that's one of the items I had on my list to bring up. Some of the residents have contacted me concerned with the temporary barricades that are in the middle of Bell Creek Boulevard. They said they're, they're becoming a hazard due to the fact that in the middle of the night, there's some smart people that are moving those around and getting them into the lane of traffic, and the residents continue to try to put them back where they belong. So there's that issue. The other issue I want to bring up is that we're still waiting for something to be done, and, and time continues to slip away. And I personally am, am at the breaking point of just saying, you know what? I'd like to direct our staff to go put some stop signs up and see what happens and, and see if we can take care of the problem and get rid of the barricades and, and can quit continuing to have this thing linger without any action being taken. And that's just my opinion of, of what needs to be done to get Bell Creek, the Bell Creek issue taken care of. That's what the residents want, that's what they've implied over and over that they want. But it just seems like it continues to drag. Another month goes by and we're still talking about Bell Creek. Jim, do you have any suggestions?
Well, I was just going to point out, in your management update, there's a, a community meeting scheduled for the twenty-first. I realize that's a couple of weeks from now, but there's a meeting scheduled Tuesday, June twenty-first, at seven PM out there to try to get some consensus again with the, the residents after the study session we had with the council.
I understand that the study session was a couple of weeks ago. We still got a couple of weeks before we have the, the outreach. And then after we have the outreach, it's going to be a couple more month or two before we get any action. And I'm just starting to get frustrated, because this is something this council has brought forward to the staff several months ago, and it just doesn't, it seems like every time they come in, we've got to study something, or we've got to do this, or we've got to do that. It just continues to drag on and on, and I just want to make it well-known that I'm at my limit, my frustrations have, have peaked, and I think that the council needs to intervene if we can't get some action taken on that issue in a timely manner. Mr. Benson, did you have something on that issue or something?
Yes, I did. You know, this is a very important issue, involves the safety of schoolchildren. And it seems to me like, don't the residents want stop signs there? Three stop signs?
Yes.
At that intersection? Is that what they want?
That's what's been conveyed.
And it seems to me like that's the cheapest alternative that we've heard about. Why don't we do that? And see how that works out? I mean, if people will stop at the stop signs, that's going to, unless somebody just runs a stop sign, that may resolve the issue. But it's the, it's the cheapest alternative that I've heard of. It can probably accomplish in four or five days or less. So why don't we do that?
Mr. Bullock.
At the conference that myself, Mr. Benson, and Mr. Douglas went to, one of the speakers said, sometimes you just have to throw away the book. He says, common sense rules, and everybody wants to go buy a book that all it does is hold everything up. I think it's time to throw away the book and put up the stop signs. I've been saying this for, I think it's, we've been on this same discussion since the last council. And now with this council, we've been talking about it since February. And we keep getting excuses from a book on why these three stop signs aren't work, weren't going to work, but every alternative that the book says hasn't worked either. So I'm in full suggestion for council just to direct and say, let's put up the three stop signs and see what that does. If it doesn't work, at least we know we've tried all the alternatives.
Mr. McAldonie.
Everybody wants to see this solved. Do we, are we saying to have staff go out tomorrow and put stop signs up? Or are we saying, let's let this community meeting happen in two weeks, and based on the outcome of that meeting, either proceed with stop signs or proceed with the measure that we've previously directed staff to take, which seemed to be the, the right answer? I guess, here's the point I'll make, I guess it's, you know, one of the things I do in my day job is deal with requirements. People tell me they want to do something, and if I take them literally, oftentimes I don't deliver what they really want at the end of the day. And so it's, it's a real challenge to try and interpret what somebody says they want or says they need and give them what they really need, right? Kind of like being a parent. So how do we translate and, and use the expertise of staff to say, here is the problem that you, you've presented us, here is the, the concern, these are the factors, what will actually solve the problem, not create a new problem or simply appease somebody for a couple of weeks because we took quick action, but it doesn't really solve the problem in the end? And yes, it's taken a while to get to this point, but what, what exactly are we saying? What we're going to do here? I'm, I'm not clear.
There hasn't been a determination of what's going to be done there. The trial was to have the barricades put up. Now they're going to meet again with the residents to have an outreach to see what they want. What frustrates me, I think, the most is that every time the residents have contacted me, and you guys know I brought in a signed letter from many of those residents in that area and turned it over to the, to the city. They have conveyed they would like stop signs with crosswalks. Now, that happens to be one of the things that's not on the list of ways to take care of this. After being in the traffic department, I think it is a way to take care of it. I happened to drive through Bell Creek today, and I noticed that intersection is getting some concrete work done and some other things, the barricades are there, the flaggers trying to flag you around the barricades that are there as a temporary measure, and it's not a good scenario. I mean, so, either pull the barricades off while they're doing the work and flag them through, and then before you go home at night, put the barricades back up, something, because it is a, a fairly dangerous situation. I also noticed that the stop sign directly north of that intersection is completely covered by a tree. And if we're working on trying to get safety issues in place along Bell Creek, we've got barricades up, we've got one, one stop sign going northbound that's completely covered with a tree, I would just like to see a little bit more efforts taken in the area, and I want to see this come to a resolve. I don't disagree with you, Mr. McAldonie, that, that there's a process, but this process has been going on for well over a year. And there has to come to some, at some point in time, somebody has to say, stop, enough's enough, let's, let's do, put temporary stop signs. See how it works? If it works, great. If it doesn't, if it doesn't fulfill their needs, maybe there's something else to do. But at some point in time, we have to be accountable to those residents on that street and take some form of action to help with the problem. And that's all I'm trying to say, not that we shouldn't follow the process, but the process is getting real old in my, in my mind.
Totally agree, and I think, you know, to your credit, you took a, an item that had been fumbling in, in nowhere and finally brought it into the, into the process. So if we put it, if we take that period of time from when this began to when you actually helped get traction on it, we have to take that out of mind, unfortunately.
Sure.
And acknowledge that it's now in the process, we've got two weeks left. It sounds like there's some valid observations on balancing the test configuration with work that's being done. But, I mean, my take is, we got to see it through and let the data present itself and then take the appropriate action. I, I can tell you, again, I think I said this in our study session, I have a stop sign on the corner, and I can, I cannot tell you the percent of people that do not stop at that stop sign.
Sure.
Stop signs are worthless by and large. People get very comfortable with them, and the worst offenders are the people that live in the neighborhood, and they roll right through them. Physical barriers, changes to how you move through a zone, change how you drive. And if the concern is to reduce speed in that corridor, stop signs aren't going to do it. So anyway, it, it's feedback we've heard before. I'm, I'm eager to hear what the citizens have to say in the community meeting, and then I agree, we need to come away and have a definitive and quick course of action on how we bring this thing to a close once that's done.
Okay, here's what I'm willing to do. Number, number one, I'm to point, park a plow truck in the middle of the road, if that's what it takes to slow traffic down, we have to do something.
Bingo.
And, and apparently the barricades aren't working, that's why I got received calls on it. And here's what I'm willing to do, when's the next council meeting? Two weeks from today? Is that prior to or before, is it, is it prior to or after the, the meeting with residents?
It's just prior to, the meeting is.
Just prior to?
Thursday, June twenty-first.
Then what I'm going to say is, in two council meetings? If there hasn't been a decision on how to take care of this problem, then I ask this council to make a decision on taking care of the problem two weeks, or, or, or one month from today. That way, we give the staff the time to meet with those residents, come back with, with something that'll work to take care of the problem, and, and act upon that, or I, I'm going to ask this council to take the action. And that way, because, because by that point, I will have waited long enough for, for some resolve. Would you, would you please, Jim, please pass that along to whoever is necessary? And would you put that as an item on that council meeting one month from today?
Absolutely.
So that, that item's there, those residents can come in, if there hasn't been action, this council can act. Thank you. I have one other item that I want to bring up. I know several of you received calls. I know several of you received calls again for the event center. And I have talked several times to different people, but Ms. Watts called me Saturday. And I know she called some of you the week of Memorial Day weekend. And I talked in depth about who went out there, what was, you know, how they feel. I talked to Claudia, Ms. Barnes, about this first. Linda called me this weekend. I went out to the event center. I was there at approximately a quarter to 11:00. I stopped in front of her house. I did not hear anything. Doesn't mean that there wasn't something loud going on prior, but I did not hear anything. And I didn't go to the event center first because I wanted to make sure that they didn't see me drive in and turn the music down. There was no evident noise at the time I stopped in front of her house at a quarter to 11:00. I proceeded and pulled into the event center and parked in the parking area on the northeast side of the building, right there on the northern end of the parking lot, on the east side of the building where all the cars were parked. And I didn't hear anything at that time. And I sat there long enough. Someone opened the door. I could hear a very low volume of music, but nothing that was, that I felt could disturb anybody was, it was pretty low. So I don't know what's happening over at the event center. I know I did get asked about why they can't file a complaint. The response that I was given is the fact that there has to be a violation in order to be allowed to file a complaint. And Officer Baker may be able to speak to that a little more clearly. Because I, you know, the scenario I see is if there is no complaint and you file, and you force an officer to file a complaint, then they could file on you for filing a false complaint. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. Some of the folks that live in the area around the event center have contacted me and their frustrations were that they called the police department and the officers would not allow them to file a complaint. And I thought anybody could file a complaint, but here's what I found out in the interim, is that if there's no violation and you file a complaint, then in fact, you're filing a false complaint because there's no violation. And I wanted to see if you would back that statement up. Is that how you see it? I mean, I'm trying to make sure that, number one, I want to make sure we protect any residents that are in an environment that their quality of life has been damaged because there is a clear violation of disturbing the peace. If there's no clear violation of disturbing the peace and they still want to file a complaint, how does that work through the process? I mean, are you taking a complaint that is not valid?
Essentially, if the complaint, it wanted to sign, file a report and sign a complaint, we could serve a summons for that complaint based on the evidence that, you know, if we could find probable cause.
Right, if the officers went out and the officer felt there clearly wasn't a violation, then you could file a summons against the complainant for filing a false complaint. Is that what you're saying?
No, that wouldn't occur unless it was an intentional false complaint. If you could show that it was intentional false complaint and they were doing it maliciously.
Okay. I'm really frustrated with this issue because, number one, I want to make sure that if there's a disturbance of the peace, that we're taking it seriously. But I also want to make sure that we don't, that we don't infringe upon a business's zoning use by right that they have unless it's apparent that there's a violation. And I know the officers have been out there multiple times. I know that our council members have been out there multiple times and maybe it's bad timing, but when I was there, I didn't hear anything until I went up near the door and it was, it was a low volume. I couldn't, even with the door open, I couldn't have heard it on the street to the east of the event center. So I will continue to monitor it and see if there are any clear violations. And I know the police will be out there constantly to monitor those events. But clearly, there's something going on. Either, you know, you can, you can hear it at times or you don't hear it at times. I don't know. But I would like to get to the bottom of it because I know the residents are frustrated in that area, but I don't want to infringe on the business's use by rights either.
Mr. Mayor, I can assure you that the patrol division and the patrol officers are aware of the call volume that we get there, you know?
Right.
There has been a lot of calls over the period of time for the noise. And they know the complainants, the folks that you talked about. Our officers know those folks because they've been in contact with them before. So we watch that. We do take a particular close attention to that area.
Good, good. And I know you guys do. I'm just saying this on record so that anybody at home can see that I've brought the issue up. I am, you know, one of the things that the complainants have told me is that they just don't feel like they're getting anywhere, so they're going to quit complaining, they're going to quit calling. And I really don't want to see that happen. I think that anybody in our city, any resident that clearly has a violation or complaint that they would like to make, that they be heard on the basis of the fact that they have rights as well. But I think it's up to the officer to determine if there's a violation. And I'm reliant upon that, so please keep us posted as this thing continues.
And I would also encourage people, if they have a complaint for noise, to call us as soon as they have the noise complaint. And, you know, we will get it documented through our CAD system and it's on record. And we know how many calls we get in that area.
You know, Chuck, one of the things that I would, I would like to ask of you for the police department is that when those complaints come in, one of the things the complainants say that discourages them from calling is that when they call 911 and file the complaint of the noise problem, that the officers are pulling into the event center and the event center staff is watching. And when someone pulls in, that they're turning the volume down so that there is no violation. I would, on that particular situation, if the officers could go to the complainant's house first and from that house, determine if there's a violation before the user has a chance to adjust the volume one way or the other, I think it'll kind of take that out of play so that the officer can get a clear perspective of what the complainant is calling for. Instead of going to the event center first, they turn the music down, it goes over and the complainant says, "Well, before you went in there, it was loud." It'll take that piece out of it so that the officer can get a clear perspective. Thank you. Mr. McElhany, did you have something?
No.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, not a couple of weeks ago, but about nine days ago, May 26th, I got a call from Linda Watts. I had told her, "Call me when something's happening over at the event center and I'll go by there and check it out." So this was probably about 10:00 or 10:30, Saturday night, the 26th. And I just went directly into the parking lot. I don't think anybody recognized my car. I don't know why they would. I could hear it in the parking lot, but it wasn't something that, you could especially hear the bass beat, the low-frequency bass, thump, thump, thump. But it wasn't anything that I thought was objectionable even at that close range. Now, the noise is louder out in the back of the event center to the north. And from the outside wall, it's about 150 feet to a fence and on the other side of that fence are the backyards of the people who live back there. If anybody's got a complaint, it's those people. But have we gotten any complaints from the people who live right behind the event center? Because that, that could be a problem. If you were, say, out on your back porch trying to do something, you would be disturbed by that, by the sound that was coming out of there. I went around the perimeter with one of their security guards who had a decibel meter and never got over 76. But, and I did talk to Ms. Watts. She said, sitting out on her porch, she could hear it. And I would imagine that if you're sitting outside, you could probably hear something. But it's like I can hear aircraft sometimes going over my house, but it's such a low volume that it really doesn't. I'm not going to call the FAA or anything and complain about it. It's the people behind the event center, I think, that might have a legitimate complaint. But when you're a block or two away, I can't see that the sound's going to be loud enough to give somebody a, an objective reason to file a complaint. At least, that's just my opinion. And, you know, my hearing is not as good as some other people's, but I could hear something out in the parking lot. I could hear it inside my car with all the windows closed. But the further you get away, the more the noise diminishes. But can we, have we gotten any complaints from the people who live behind it?
Here's what I would recommend, Jim. We'll let staff continue to do what they're doing on it. And we can ask that we get an update from the police department in the near future about what's happening over at the police, over at the event center and what kind of complaints we're getting and where they're coming from. So that we know, so that we know if there are more calls from that north, that north end. How's that?
Yeah, and I did go inside and it was extremely loud on the inside, without a doubt. I wouldn't have wanted to stay inside very long, even though the music was sort of dewop, you might call it. I don't know. It was, so it was my generation's music, so I can't have any objection to that. But it was so loud that, I don't know. But anyway, outside, it's not so loud as to be objectionable, except in that area behind it, in my opinion.
Well, we'll get an update from staff.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other administrative council business to take care of this evening, we'll get into reports. City attorney?
I have nothing further than what we've had this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Interim city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did receive a weekly report from the city manager's office. It was sent out around 6:30, 7 o'clock tonight. Just a few of the highlights. There are several third-party events coming up. Please RSVP to Luisa Gallegos if you have not already. And there's a list of those on the very first page. We had several items that we're going to be following up on in future meetings. The first one is Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment is going to be coming to make a presentation. It does say June 25th in here. We're still confirming that date internally, but that's the tentative date for now. Mr. Douglas inquired about the status of a quiet zone project at 96th and Highway 2. We did provide an update to council on May 29th via email and also referenced a February 6th city manager update on this topic. Second thing was the Chambers Road Bike Trail. For those of you that have been up on 112th and Chambers, you might have noticed some of the work that's been going on there. There was some electrical work that was completed and now that hill has been cut down, so you can actually see a lot better going southbound. And that Crusher Fine Trail has been put in place there, making that connection. Oil and gas update. We did post a video open house to the city's YouTube account and the video center. So we're still soliciting comments on the proposed regulations that are going to be coming before you. And the planning commission will actually be voting on the land use code amendments tomorrow at their meeting. And then that'll come back to you on June 18th for first reading. Dahlia Street resurfacing was another topic. We did receive a letter back from Adams County. The county has done some minor patching in the past few weeks, but they did agree that that part of the road needed to be reconstructed. And so that's on target for 2015, unfortunately, but that's when they have sufficient funding available. We already talked about the Bell Creek meeting and then there are three attached memos here. The first one is from Parks and Recreation regarding the natural resource damage settlement. Doing some project revisions. So we're going to be bringing forth a resolution for you to consider in a couple of weeks that will require some changes to that amendment, that resolution. Mr. Cordero provided legislative report, end of session summary report for the year. And then we also attached the Adams County Economic Development Annual Report, which just came out.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll get into my reports. It's been a while since I've had a chance to report. Had a meeting with Shay Holmes some time ago. Met with Carolyn Keith to talk about some of the stuff that was in the reappropriation ordinance. Then I left and I was in Las Vegas at the ICSC conference. And I would like to convey to the council that after being there before, I think the team that went out there, the folks that I had the opportunity to work with from our staff, did a tremendous job, extremely outstanding. We spent literally every waking moment with each other for about four days. And it was very tiring. And I will tell you that most cities had their mayor present. And, you know, moving forward, I think if we're going to have teams that have to split up, I'm not opposed to having another council person go to be, have representation with the other members of the team that are going off in another direction. It worked out pretty well this year. We were extremely busy. We made a ton of contacts and there is a lot of interest in development in Commerce City from several factors. And I don't want to go in into detail on what those are because of confidentiality-type pieces. But our staff, which did a tremendous job, will be bringing forward a presentation to lay out the contacts that we met, that were in the restaurant-type business, the hotel-type business or other type businesses. But there is a lot of interest in Commerce City right now. I think it was extremely productive. And Jim, just so you know, we made it a point to meet with Dairy Queen Orange Julius, okay? But I can't sit here and name all of them because we met with so many different organizations. But I'm sure Mr. Hayes and his team will bring back a very comprehensive report. Then I want to congratulate our staff on the efforts of putting together another great parade for this community. I know that there were staff from all departments that participated and it went, it went very smooth. I was, I was very happy to see how well the parade, the administrative pieces of the parade were handled. But I would also like to thank all of, all of the people that came out, whether to watch the parade or to participate in the parade, to honor our military, past and present for Memorial Day. I think that Commerce City does a great thing every year by having that parade and recognizing why we're free. It's because of those people that have given their lives and put their self in harm's way to provide that freedom. Next, I would, I had a meeting with the staff in the Historical Society, talking about the potential for purchase of the black property or properties. And we'll be seeing them here in the near future come to a regular meeting. Met with most of the council, went to a meeting with the 27J, 27J School District and the Brighton City Council. Commerce City hosted that event. Were meeting with them quarterly and that, that meeting was very successful as well. Working on the potential for some joint projects between all three entities, which I think will say a lot to the metro area about how you can work with your neighbors. Also, I took a tour of the North Forest Office Centers, Office Spaces. I was really impressed with how those office spaces are laid out and how they can be expanded upon for businesses as they grow and the use of them more as an incubator. Where you can have a single office and then you can, when you add employees, you can continue to expand. I think it gives a lot of these in-home businesses that we have in our community, which in Commerce City, we have a lot of in-home businesses. The reunion area has a lot of in-home businesses. And it gives the opportunity for those folks to graduate out of their home into an office and grow that space as they need so that they're not having to purchase a larger space and utilize funds that they could use for capital instead. and utilize funds that they could use for capital instead. And they can grow together with their space. I think also, and I brought it up at the time of the tour with Jim, that, with Mr. Hayes, sorry, Jim, that I think that it would be a good fit for somewhere in Derby to have one of those type of office spaces for a lot of our nonprofit organizations, whether it be the Historical Society, the Housing Authority, Community Enterprise, those kinds of. And they can, they could pick the size of their space. So I know they're looking into different possibilities because that is a urban renewal authority zone. And next, I attended Rotary. And I'm glad that Mr. McElhany's back from vacation. I know he's the only one, I believe, that missed the parade. And you missed a great event. But hopefully, you got refreshed on your vacation so that you can get right back into action. And with that, I don't have any further reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention one thing for the council's information. You mentioned the black property. Those contracts were prepared by me, and they have now been signed. So we're in that time period. As you recall, you authorized an option period.
Right.
And the lower number that you had authorized was the number that was in the contract.
Okay. Now, with that being said... With that being said, Bob, I want to make sure, you know, because after reading the charter and looking at purchase of properties and stuff, that it, you know, I know this was just some money to hold it, escrow money. But at the time, if we were to purchase a property, that has to be brought back into this council by charter, right? And approved by the council. And then I would have to sign it, correct?
Yeah, because there has to be closing documents and so forth for the closing. This is just the contract to enter into the closing. It actually was an option period.
Yeah, it's an option agreement rather than a...
Than a purchase.
Than a purchase agreement. But at the time of purchase, I just want to make sure that everybody at home and here understands that per the charter, that the council would have to approve that purchase, and I would have to sign those documents. Is that correct?
Right, you would. Because there's funding involved, too, that has to be authorized by the council, so.
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Just a couple of quick items. I actually wanted to give kudos to staff. I had a couple of resident concerns come up recently. And I actually, rather than shooting an email and it getting lost in that universe, used the Ask C3 system. And the concerns were resolved in a day, which was pretty amazing. So just want to thank you for that. Obviously, that's a great tool. So if any residents have any concerns, make sure you go on the city website and hit the Ask C3 button, and it'll get resolved. The other item, just wanted to mention, it was a great Memorial Day parade. Higher turnout than I think I've seen in the last few years, actually, which was wonderful to see. Among the individual antique cars, a guy by the name of Domingo Moreno got first place. And I'm still trying to convince people that his son being on city council had nothing to do with that. But he did get a first place for his '47 Fleetline Chevy, so. That's all.
Couple things. May 23rd, I ended up at the two Adams County buildings. I picked up the two grants for the Fairfax Park. I had Karen and Keith with me, Mike Brown, and one of the young lady from Parks and Recs. Like I said, the grants were right at $1 million. That's going to be greatly appreciated over there in that park to fix that drainage system and put those new facilities back in there. Also, remember, June 9th is Derby Day down in the old Derby area.